Okay, it is 7:30 PM, 7:33 PM, excuse me, on July 22, 2025. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I am Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals, and I'm calling this meeting of the Board to order. I would first like to confirm that all members and anticipated officials are present. So from the Zoning Board of Appeals, we have Roger Dupont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
Venkatesh Hawley.
Here.
Adam LeBlanc.
Here.
And Brad Barnowski.
Here.
Good to have you all with us. Joining us from the town, we have Colleen Ralston, our Clerk and zoning assistant.
Here.
Good to have you with us. I don't believe we have anyone else from the town with us this evening. So for docket 3836, 103 Thorndike Street, Christopher Alphen is with us.
That's it.
Good to have you here. For docket 385236 Glen Avenue, we have Leslie Mahoney is with us. See there. For docket 385663 Chester Street, Junior Kamara.
Yes, I'm here.
You are. Perfect. For docket 3858164 Hillside Avenue, we have Bruce Ward.
Yep, here.
You're here. 386067 Foster Street, Christopher DeCilio. Good to have you with us. And for docket 3861351 Appleton Street, we have Daniel Cameron.
Here.
Good to have you with us as well. So tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with the bill signed by Governor Healy on March 28, 2025, which extended temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to June 30, 2027. The extension of these provisions allows public bodies to hold their meetings remotely by providing live, adequate, alternative means of public access to the deliberations. This meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast by ACMI. Members of the public who are participating via Zoom and who wish to offer public comment should be aware that they will be asked to provide their full name and address so that a complete public record of the meeting can be taken in accordance with state law. All participants of this meeting are advised that people may be listening to the meeting without offering public comment, and those people are not required to identify themselves. Any votes that are taken this evening will be conducted by roll call. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the Board will be taking up new business at this meeting, as Chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington, Massachusetts discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy, an Algonquin word meaning swift waters, the Board hereby acknowledges that the Town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. So just for tonight's meeting order, yet again, we have a very full agenda. In order to expedite the hearing, I'll be taking tonight's business slightly out of the order posted on the agenda. So we will start with 63 Chester Street, and then move to 103 Thorndike Street, then 36 Glen Avenue, then 67 Foster Street, then 164 Hillside Avenue, and 351 Appleton Street. And after all that, we'll take up the administrative items on the agenda. I cannot provide a definitive time for when the later items will be taken up. If you're particularly interested in those items, I encourage you to check in periodically so you don't miss your hearing. If you are an applicant and your hearing is called and you are not available at that time, we will try you again later this evening. So before opening tonight's meeting for public hearings, here are some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves for themselves and to make their presentation to the Board. I will then request that the members of the Board ask what questions they have on the proposal. After the Board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. At the conclusion of public comment, the Board will deliberate and vote to either continue or to close the public hearing. All votes will be conducted by a roll call vote. The final vote on any matter before the Board will be taken at a subsequent meeting once the written decision has been drafted and provided to the Board. The decision will then be filed with the town clerk, starting the 20-day appeal period under state law. After that time, the applicant may proceed with their building permit. However, under state law, no decision granted by this Board shall take effect until a certified copy of the final decision has been filed with and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds in Cambridge by the applicant. So with that, the first item on our agenda this evening is docket number 3856, which is 63 Chester Street. This is a continuance of a hearing that we started last month. This is, as we had noted at the time, this is a slightly different application than is usually before the Board. There is a request for a reasonable modification based on disability. This is done under the Americans with Disabilities Act and several other federal statutes and state statutes. And we do have a letter that was posted to the website from the ADA Coordinator for the Town of Arlington, Mr. Tim Ross. So if I could ask the applicants to just introduce themselves, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Hanlon to explain a little how we're going to go about this.
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
All right, excellent. So this is Junior Kamara from Mason Works. So we want to help a customer, Caitlin Ram, to install a driveway on Foster Street. And she, at the moment, does not have a driveway on that street. It is on the back of the house at a lower level. And this is to accommodate a disability of her mother that lives with her. And she wants to install a driveway in that with the permeable pavers and just small to accommodate one vehicle.
And in order to accomplish this, the, as we've noted before, said this will be constructed within the front yard setback, which typically, under the zoning bylaw of the Town of Arlington, you are not allowed to construct a parking space within the front yard setback, and you can't build a driveway leading to such a parking space. And so the request comes before us. It was initially filed as a variance, but it is actually coming through to us more as this is a request for a reasonable modification. So Mr. Hanlon, if you would sort of explain the rationale behind this.
Do you think the state and federal law both prohibit discrimination on the basis of disability? The Federal Housing Act has that in 42 USC 3604. And Title II of the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act has it at Section 12131. And they are implementing federal regulations. And so the question and the issue there is discrimination. But the case law makes it perfectly clear that it applies to private developments. And it provides, and it applies in the zoning, in the zoning context. There are some guidelines from the state of Massachusetts on the standard to be applied. And that is in the record. I put that plus a memorandum that I wrote a month or so ago in the record. So you see it all in writing. But according to that office, the Board needs to make two determinations. First is whether the person seeking the modification or the person on whose behalf the modification is sought has a disability-based need for the modification. That's the first thing. And whether the requested modification is reasonable. And in deciding whether it's reasonable, there are two factors that come from the case law. One is that the request is that the requested modification would not cause any undue hardship or administrative burden to the town. And the other is whether it would somehow fundamentally undermine the basic purpose that the zoning law has set out to achieve. And that last provision is rarely accepted. It's very hard for a modification to fundamentally overturn the purpose of the zoning bylaw. But that probably is the thing that most nearly comes into our jurisdiction. The obligation not to discriminate is on the town and not necessarily particularly on us. We don't have rules or bylaws that clearly state what our role is in this process, but it's very clear from the state guidance that either ZBAs or planning boards are supposed to have a role in here. And the primary way, reason for it would probably be to assess the impact of a modification on the policy of the bylaw. And it's also important to know that, under the law, you're not required to say yes or no to the particular modification that is asked for by the applicant. You can look for less, for less extreme alternatives, and you're entitled to, and you're entitled to make reasonable conditions. And that would be part within the, within the province of Board of Appeals as well. And you can see that it would be used here. Now, the application we have before is this for a variance. And there's lots of reasons why this can't fly as a variance, but the one that's easiest to just say is that variances have to do with the land, and they can't be based on the particular circumstances of particular people. And the whole point of this is to accommodate the particular circumstances of the person who is disabled. So that kind of, but, but the special permit is a different issue. And there was, and if you remember, this is also asking for a second driveway. And the second driveway is only allowed under 6.1.10A second paragraph if it doesn't violate any other zoning requirement, any other dimensional requirement. So the fact that this is in a restricted front yard precludes not only just putting it there, but also precludes it being used as a second driveway. But there's sort of a catch to that because once you've decided to modify the provision that forbids it from being in the front yard, then it doesn't violate the, any zoning bylaw requirement anymore. And the special permit would then be available to approve the second driveway. And that would be available as a regular special permit. It would have to be filed like all special permits are. And both it and the modification could be, if it is the will of the Board, for the Board to do that is to limit them to the situation where the person with the disability continues to be in the house. So two other things, of the three things that we need to address. The general policy is against having an open hearing and going deeply into medical records. What we know already is what Mr. Kamara said to us. And we have the testimony of the ADA Coordinator that, in fact, this is a legitimate thing. And, and while I hesitate to, to say to anyone, they can't ask whatever question they want, it would, is probably not a very good idea for us to be doing a lot more to verify the need. We also are probably not in a very great position to decide what kind of administrative burden is on the town and, and if any. But the main issue for us will be whether or not there's something in the zoning bylaw that is so offended by allowing this parking lot in the front, but not parking lot, parking space in the front yard that fundamentally defeats the purpose of the zoning bylaw. And that, we're informed by the county attorney or the town attorney, would be a very difficult finding to make and sustain. So with that, I'll stop. I'll answer any questions if, if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Are there questions from the Board?
Mr. Chair, could I just ask one quick follow-up question?
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Hanlon, it sounds like then, just to make sure I'm understanding it correctly, that our kind of jurisdictional path here is through the special, is our, through a special permitting authority. Just make sure I'm understanding that correct. That's, we're not doing this, we're not thinking of this as a variance because it doesn't run with the land.
No, but we are doing it as a reasonable modification. We're basically waiving the law, not, not because it meets the requirements of Section 10, because failure of the town to do that would be a violation of the Americans with a Disability Act. And it generally contemplated that when these are done in the zoning situation, the expert local agencies having to do with zoning would make the decision. But basically, even if there wasn't a special permit involved in this case, we would still have jurisdiction to do this. And it's possible to make the zoning by, I mean, to have anybody else do it. If there's, if there's a statute that created a different procedure. But in the absence of specifically dealing with it, this is what's usually contemplated, where, where a reasonable modification is of a zoning bylaw.
One more thing.
Yes, Mr. Kamara.
Yes, just I want to bring it up to the Board, that is, the existing driveway on the back of the house on the different street is a sloped driveway and has no access to the first level of the house. So in order to go to the house, it needs to go a set of stairs in the deck in order to get in. And this parking space on the front at 63 Chester Street is right at the house level. So there's a big difference in between the parking space in the front and the driveway on the back of the house, you know, for this disabled person.
Thank you for that. Are there other questions from the Board? Seeing none. I will now be opening this hearing for public comment. Public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the Board for the purpose of informing its decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. Those who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the React tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the Chair, asked to give your full name and address to the Record, and be given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the Chair. Please remember to speak clearly. And once all public questions and comments have been addressed, the public comment period will be closed. And I will just remind members of the public that due to the, sort of the sensitive nature of the request, questions that, that have to do with the, the nature of the disability will not be allowed. So with that, are there any members of the public who do wish to ask questions or make comments in regards to this hearing, which is for 63 Chester Street? We have, hand up, Mr. Steve Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I believe I said this at the last hearing, but I'm trying to remember exactly the context in which I brought it up, so I'm just going to repeat it. I would hope that the Board would, since this is an accommodation that deals with the disability that may be temporary or, or, you know, in terms of the person sort of residing at the home being not necessarily a permanent condition. I would hope that the condition that the ZBA may add to the potential approval here, if they choose to go ahead and prove this, is that the, the second driveway would be returned to its front lawn status, not, not a driveway upon the expiration of the requirement for the accommodation. And also, if the property gets sold, that, that happened before the property gets sold. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address this application? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period for this hearing. So again, what we have, this is a, it's a request for a reasonable modification, essentially to Section 6110A of the zoning bylaw. We are allowed to grant a second driveway by a special permit, except that any second driveway has to abide by all the requirements of the zoning bylaw, which this would not because of its location in the front yard. So the, specifically, the request, the modification would be to waive that portion to allow the driveway to be constructed in this area because this would afford proper accessible access from the parking to the interior of the home to accommodate the disability that the, that the resident has. So as Mr. Hanlon had pointed out, there's a couple of questions the Board needs to decide. The first is whether the person has a disability-based need for the modification. This has been established by the ADA Coordinator, and I believe the handicap placard is in the record as well. And the second is whether the modification requested is reasonable. And for that, there's the two, a modification may only be found to be unreasonable if it causes an undue hardship or fiscal or administrative burden to the municipality. I don't see how this would do any of those things. And the second is whether it undermines the basic purpose that the zoning bylaw was set out to achieve. This is sort of a minor difference in what the bylaw would normally allow. So I don't believe it fundamentally undermines the zoning bylaw. So in that case, the, the Board should modify the request for modification, which brings us to the question for the special permit for a second driveway that the Board needs. There are three findings the Board needs to make. The first would be the second driveway can be added in a manner that avoids undue concentration of population. This does nothing to change the concentration of population. The second driveway may be added in a manner that allows adequate provision of transportation. This actually improves the ability of the residents to have access to transportation. And the third is that the second driveway may be added in a manner that conserves the value of land and buildings in the vicinity. And as, I think when we get to the matter of conditions, I think we'll have a discussion about how to make sure that, that that is done as well. And we'll just briefly note as an aside that at town meeting this past, this past spring, that changes were approved to this section of the zoning bylaw, but they have not yet been approved by the Attorney General's Office. And so we are proceeding with the current, the current set of the zoning bylaws until such time as those get approved. And that usually won't happen until sometime later in the fall. So then we have the general findings for a special permit. To establish that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. Note the equestered use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district. It is allowed by special permit with the provision that we do have this request for modification that would allow it where it would normally not be allowed. The requested use is essential or desirable to the public, public convenience or welfare. That this modification will allow the current residents of the home to more thoroughly enjoy the, their house and to have better access to and from their house and to the community at large. Will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. This will create a driveway where there is none currently, which is a little bit of a different pattern for Chester Street, but it should not be an undue burden. Requested use will not overload any public systems. The special regulations for the requested use are fulfilled. This is where the request for modification comes into effect. And there will not, use will not be detrimental to public health or welfare, and it will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. So those are the required findings for the special permit. Are there any questions from the Board in regards to the required findings?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barnowski.
I might just also add that I think whether it be desirable for public convenience or welfare, whether it fits in that bucket or somewhere else, I think complying with federal law is a pretty salient factor in this and something that is worth us weighing and being considering now, particularly since that, that law, you know, it has a pretty noble purpose of being anti-discriminatory. So I just put, I would just put that out there as another element in the mix.
Great, thank you for that. So should the Board move forward to approve their three standard conditions we would apply to a special permit? The first is plans and specifications approved by the Board for the special permit shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the Building Inspector of the Town of Arlington. Connection with this application for zoning relief shall be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. Second is the Building Inspector is hereby notified there to monitor the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures that at any time they determine that violations are present. The Building Inspector shall proceed under Section 3.1 of the zoning bylaw and under the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 21D of the Massachusetts General Laws and Institute Non-Criminal Complaints. If necessary, the Building Inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with Section 3.1. And number three, Board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to this special permit grant. As had been noted by Mr. Hanlon and also by Mr. Moore, the, the Board, because this is not a special permit that would be, become a, necessarily a permanent part of the landscape, that it is specifically granted because there is a, an underlying reason under federal law for it to exist. I would propose a condition. So at the time that the reasonable modification is no longer required in support of an established disability, the applicant is to either remove the second driveway or to take action to make it unusable as a driveway. So with that language, or if they wanted something slightly different?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont.
I don't know, maybe this is already incorporated into what you just said, but someone commented earlier about the sale of the property. So it's when the accommodation is no longer required or the property is transferred. I assume that that means that the person who is seeking, who has the disability would no longer be there. But I didn't know if it's worth mentioning or upon the sale of the property. I, I forget, is this a two-family?
It is a single family.
Single family. So one would presume that you could have the accommodation no longer being necessary, even if the owners are still there, but upon the sale. So I don't know, it's not critical, but I think it doesn't occur.
We could certainly add that to say at the time that the reasonable modification is no longer required or the property is, is no longer required in support of an established disability or the property is transferred. The applicant is to either remove the second driveway or take action to make it unusable as a driveway.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I don't really think that we need to war.
Okay.
Because, I mean, if it's transferred, if, if it's transferred and the person with the disability is still living there, which can happen, then, then it would still, it would still remain in effect. The fundamental thing is not transfer of the property. It is no longer having it at the property. The person for whom the disability is required.
Okay.
For the combination is required. I do think that we ought to be treating the special permit and the reasonable modification separately here. Because the special permit will be like any special permit. You'd have to file it in the usual places and so forth, and it would fit. And of course, it's always possible to, I mean, special permits don't run with the land, and you can, and you can apply the same condition there. But they will emerge from this hearing if, if the Board grants them what the relief they need, both a special permit to allow the second driveway, which is made possible by the modification that allows them to park in the front yard. So they have two different, different items of permission from us.
Okay. Were there any further questions from the Board's matter?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Hawley.
There was a mention, was it on this, here, on this application or another one on the pervious versus impervious nature of the driveway? Was that something the Board would want to, or is it in our jurisdiction to ascertain that, or?
The, well, the applicant has stated that it would be a, it would be permeable, will be permeable pavers. Okay. But I can certainly put that down as a condition that the driveway shall be constructed using permeable pavers as put forward by the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Hawley. Anything else from the Board? Ask Mr. Hanlon if he'll be willing to coordinate the drafting of a Ask Mister Hanlon if he'll be willing to coordinate the drafting of a decision in favor of approval.
Yes, I certainly will.
Fantastic. So with that. I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington close the public hearing for docket three eight five six sixty three Chester Street. Um, you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mister Hanlon. So as it noted at the start, um, the board will prepare a decision. It'll be voted on um, as a subsequent uh, meeting of the board. Uh, at which point it is transferred to the town clerk's office, and then a copy can be picked up from the town clerk to be registered. So with that, so vote to, to close, um, roll call vote of the board. We have Mister Dupont.
Yes.
Mister Hanlon?
Yes.
Mister Holly?
Yes.
Mister LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mister Baronowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, we are closed on docket three eight five six sixty three Chester Street. That brings us, uh, thank you very much, Mister Kamarra, for being here. And uh. We'll be in touch uh, through, through Miss Ralston. So next, um, on my agenda tonight, um, we're gonna go, go to one oh three Thorndike Street. Uh, this is a. Hearing um, that is uh, is a continuance of a. Prior, from prior meetings. Um, it's been a few sessions since they've been with us. Ask Mister Alphen if he can uh. Introduce, reintroduce us to the project and tell us what has changed since the last time they were before us.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Now, for the record, attorney Christopher Alphen, Blatman, Babrowski, Haverty and Silverstein. Uh, with me is. Uh, Alan, I believe, uh, who was the architect on the property. Um, who can speak to some of the modifications, but if you remember the last hearing, we continued last hearing because we wanted a little more additional time to have a conversation with the building commissioner. Because at the last hearing, our issue was, do we really need to seek a variance? And if we can avoid variances, that's good. And we had a good productive conversation about if we made some modifications. To the height of the lowest floor, does that not? Uh, can we make it so that it doesn't count as a story? And therefore, we don't need a variance for having three point five stories. Uh, when uh, two point five stories are permitted. We made modifications to the plan. We sent the plan to the building commissioner and he issued the decision that because of our modifications. It is two point five stories and therefore we don't need a um. Uh, 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 a variance. And then the second thing that we were going to look into was, we had a conversation about. Applying for a special permit when you have a preexisting nonconforming structure. You tear the whole thing down and then you rebuild something else. And there was a question by the board. Of what that was, whether that was permitted or not. Uh, it's, is my position. Was my position, position still is that, that you can under forty eight section six. But we, we talked to our architects. Um, we looked at the bylaw and we decided that the best course of action was to apply for special permit under five point four point two point. Uh, B point eight, which permits a special permit that you are, um, when you have. Inadequate frontage and inadequate area. Uh, a special permit is permitted if you make a uh, energy efficient at home. So we talked to our architects and we decided that that's something that we would like to do and that we can do. So that's left with us, just applying for the only thing we need after all this time, and we want to thank the board for their patience and for their guidance. All we need at this point in time is a special permit under section five four to be eight. Um, with that, just so the board understands the modifications were, that were made, I'll turn it over to Alan. And he can quickly go over the modification to the lowest level.
Thank you.
I'm gonna share my screen.
Yeah.
Uh, can I run see my screen?
We can.
Okay. Um, so um, the um, we have since the uh, you know, per our last meeting, um, yeah. Uh, you know, as to follow up, you know, we have modified and corrected drawings in response to the um. You know, board's feedback, you know, one of the concerns, as you know, Chris just mentioned, was the height of the first floor. Which caused the basement to be classified as a story, right, honored the Arlington zoning bylaw. Um, we have since lowered the uh, first floor elevation. And with this change now, the distance from the basement ceiling to the average grade. Um, it is now four feet and five and a half inches, uh, need under the four for six uh, threshold. As a result, um, and the basement would no longer be considered as a separate story. Um, so that can walk through the drawings very quickly with the board. So I think the two red lines, one is an average grid, which uh, was um, uh, calculated and certified by our severance year. Uh, the flood plan is seven feet, which we have to um, put our uh, you know, first level at least a foot above it. Per our structural engineer's uh, design, we'll be using fourteen TGIs um, for Joyce, you know, on, you know, for the first floors, our floor assembly will be. Uh, at a minimum fifteen and a half uh, inch thick, uh, will likely be sixteen. So um. Uh, as a result, as you can see um, here, the dimension string from underside of ceiling. To the um, um, the average grade is now four, five and a half. Which is under uh, four for six max. Um, aside from this revision, uh, the rest of the design uh, remains the same. Um, um, you know, so we're happy to answer any questions the board may have. Um, and I, you know, being an architect and also one of the owners for prop, you know, for property, we. We do want to thank the board for your time and guidance for the past, in a few meetings, there were quite a few. So um, your, your, your input help, you know, was appreciated.
Absolutely. Um, and just to confirm, so the basement, because of its location in the flood plain. It's not able to be used for habitable space. It's really more for, for storage, is that?
Yes, that, that is correct, Miss Klein. So, Chair, so the uh, we, we, uh, we have designed the uh, the flood ban to it. And um, and it will be um, in, 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 in habitable space, you know, mainly be used for storage. Um, we, the, the um. Basement elevation was calculated, um, you know, uh, by our severance and, and coordinated with, you know, with our severance already.
And um, do you have a? Uh, an elevation or a section that shows the overall height of the?
Absolutely.
Um, so just to confirm, so average.
That's over high, high string is from average grade to top of the, the um, the ridge.
Yep.
It's currently thirty four ten.
Perfect.
Yeah. And this is the side, the, the other elevation, and this is the um, front of the house, which is actually um, significantly lower because our, our average um, the grade is lower, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. And I know we had, I'm just sort of going back over a couple of questions I know we'd had before.
Sure.
Um, so you had, at the prior hearing, um, you had addressed the question about uh, lot coverage.
Um, correct, yes, I'm.
Initially, lot coverage, I think you had initially erroneously included the driveway in the lot coverage where Arlington doesn't require that.
Um, yeah, so we, we have since removed that and we have, uh, so you know, updated drawings, we have the updated lot coverage on diagram and with the um.
We're now conforming.
Yes, we're not, not conforming. We're now just at the. Um, as you can see, we're right on thirty five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then what is the final gross floor area now that?
So um, the grow, the, the GFA um, uh, accounting, uh, excluding the basement, uh, is thirty. Three seventy two square feet total, two units combined.
Okay, and it has the two parking spaces and everything, as, as Mister Alphen had just noted.
Yeah.
Everything else is compliant, it's really.
Correct, and we, uh, and, and uh, the last month, we have introduced a uh. Uh, you know, a, a very thin, uh, landscape buffer and screening for that parking, uh, you know, for, you know, along the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And we do have two um, open spaces, you know, usable, and each is twenty feet wide minimum.
Okay. Um, are there any questions from other members of the board in regards to the application?
Good, Chairman.
Mister Hanlon?
Um, do you, do you? Happen to know what? You compare the gross floor area that you are, have, have with others on Thorndike Street? Is it bigger, smaller, or about the same as the, as the construction that's already there in the other house?
We don't have that date, data by hand, but um, but my um. Um, uh, just walking along the street, um, there, there, there are, I guess, it's relative, in a, in a, in, there are a lot of housings in that neighborhood as our mountain. Family, so um, I, I would be surprised if we're, you know. At the higher, you know, end of the range. Um, cause um, if you divide it by, you know, thirty three by two, each unit is really only sixteen, um, you know, hundred square feet.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mister Hassan.
Um. Mister Alphen, I wasn't sure if you had, uh, Mister you, if you can go ahead and stop this here, thank you. Um, Mister Alphen, I don't know if you had seen, there was a letter that was posted to the record about the, the current condition of the site.
Yes.
Are you, any measures that the applicant or the owners may or may not be taking in regards to maintaining the site?
Yeah, uh, fir- first of all, we did see the letter, but more importantly, we got a letter from the building commissioner with some of the similar concerns. And I believe my client made um, immediate action to that. I don't know if Alan, can you can speak to that, if any action has been made already? And obvious the point is that uh, hopefully, once we have a permit in hand, we're off and running and we're gonna. Uh, be able to clean up a deteriorating house. Uh, but yes, we did receive an email from the building commissioner. We're going to follow his directions.
Yeah, so we have, um, uh, so yeah, so we did have receive, um, usually receive a, a letter from a Mike and, and you know, the, you know, commissioner. So there are two things. One thing is, as you know, uh, we actually discussed the last uh, meeting, so there was a tree kind of fall, the tree from the city kind of fell into our yard. Which is, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit ongoing mess in the backyard and um. And we had talked to the uh, the big commissioner about putting up a fence. So um, you know, we need the fence regardless, you know, when, once we start the, the demolition. Which, you know, in which all, all the papers are ready. Um, so uh, we are hoping to actually move this property along uh, ASAP. And we are already gathering the, the quotes and the timeframes from ourselves to putting up the fence.
Okay.
And we'll keep the city posted on that.
Great, thank you. Um. Any further questions from members of the board on this application?
Mister Chair.
Mister Holly.
Um, a more non zoning bylaw related question, if I may, on the, this, I, I noticed there was no overhang. Was that done on purpose intentional? Just curious to know what was the rationale behind that?
Are you referring to the front door?
No, the overhang of the roof, sorry.
Oh, overhang of the roof, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so um, if I'm, if I may just go to our, our site, so the, this is, you know, a, a, and it's relatively tight site. So um, you know, we are currently building. Uh, almost, almost right on the setback line. So we kind of, um, you know, um. Uh, didn't have the luxuries to introduce a very nice, you know, overhand. That was um, that was the, uh, you know, it's not the greatest. Thing to, to, to introduce in, in a design, but it has a sacrifice that we had to make. Uh, however, you know, we will be able to um, uh, you know, um, uh, you work on some, you know, very nice. Details in there, hopefully, and then, and, and then, you know, and, and on, another note is, you know, this building is, is um. Relatively um, leaning more towards the modern looking. So um, and you know, a six inch or a foot roof overhang is not necessary from um, the, the, the aesthetic. Um, you know, requirements, yeah, so.
Sure.
But thank you for the question, yeah.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, so section five three nine, uh, projections into minimum yards, um, so projected, projecting eaves. Um. Are allowed within a.
Right.
The minimum yard, right, setbacks, um.
Yeah.
In case you weren't aware.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Sure. Okay, so at this time, um, see no more questions from the board. I could go ahead and. Open this hearing for public comment. Uh, again, public questions and comments are taken as they relate to the matter at hand, should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing its decision. Um, you may use the uh, the raise hand tool under, under react tab, or if you're on the phone, you can dial star nine. Is there any members of public who wish to address this application, which is one zero three Thorndike Street? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment period for this application. So what the board has before us now, um, this is an application for, uh, this is initially filed as a, both a variance and a special permit application. Um, as was noted by the applicant, uh, the variance can, the. Conditions that would, would have required a variance have been addressed. Um, to the satisfaction of the, the building inspector and therefore variance is no longer required. Uh, so one of the votes we'll take at the end will be to uh, to just formally withdraw the variance. Um, and then. What's left before us now is a special permit, which is uh, being taken under section five three nine B. Um, of the zoning bylaw, which allows um, the reconstruction of a. Foundation on a site that is undersized uh, with insufficient frontage. Um, so long as uh, there is, are certain energy requirements that are required and if. A, uh, if the building is. Larger than seven hundred and forty nine square feet, larger than the current building, then it requires a, a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, which. Is the nature of the uh. The final request uh, before us. So the. Uh. So five three nine B does not have um. A, any specific um, findings, but. On behalf of that, I will just note in the application um. As a proposed condition that per section five. Four two B eight. Um. A building. Must meet. E H E R S, hers requirement. In the bylaw. That will address that. Um, and then there's just the required findings, and that would be under. A special permit, uh, so that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. So towards that end, uh, the requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district, um, as we noted under section. Uh, five four two B eight. Um, a special permit can be granted uh, to allow um, the structure to be. To be built on a new foundation um. On an undersized uh, lot. Uh, second is that um, the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. As has been noted before, uh, the existing structure that is on this site um, was in poor condition and unfortunately has uh. Now is even less, even poorer condition, um. As it has not been occupied uh, for an extended period of time. Um, and it's definitely desirable to the neighborhood to have a new structure um, on this property and to have a, a. Building that is able to accommodate um, additional residents is uh. Is something that would be uh, desirable, especially in this location that has, is close to the MBTA and uh, close to other public amenities.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Hanlon?
Just wanted to add to that, that the very fact that it is complying with the requirement of a her score of forty four. Or less, or, or if the, if the international code is, gets to be less than that, that. Is an environmental benefit to the public interest as well and uh. Certainly, I, that would be a considerable improvement over the condition that I'm sure exists now.
Thank you for that. Um. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impaired pedestrian safety. So this building will be set the full setback from the front lot line. Um, which I don't believe the current building is. That will provide better sightlines for vehicles that are trying to exit the property. This, as we had noted before, this does a but, uh, a public park. Um, so there are a lot of uh, kids in the neighborhood, um, but there isn't existing. Uh, house on this property and um. This will not be unduly creating additional traffic congestion or creating any new pedestrian safety issues. Um, the requested use will not overload any public system. Uh, this will be. Do minor changes to uh, required uh, electrical sewer, uh, water and other utilities. That are provided by the town. Water and other um utilities that are provided by the town, um. There were special regulations for the requested use are fulfilled, uh, so there. Isn't particularly a special regulation, except that the the hers rating, uh. The minimum hers rating as stated in the zoning bylaw, and as we will include as a condition, um, should this be approved? Um, the requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district, um. So we've had several conversations about the the appearance of the house, um. There. It's understandable, the uh, some of the changes at the lowest level, um, are quite different than what we expect. Uh, from a lot of neighborhoods, um, this is an active floodplain, um, and as such, um, this is one of the. First houses in this neighborhood, I think that has been a complete uh, tear down and rebuild. To comply with the new requirements for um. Uh, for stormwater management and for uh, compliance with the uh. Uh, conservation commission requirements, this has been approved by the conservation commission, is meeting the requirements. Um, and as has been noted at several occasions, the first floor, the first habitable floor does need to be at least one foot above. The uh, the floodplain and anything that is, or well, the floodplain, but above flood level. Um, and as unfortunately, as we've seen in other parts of the country recently, um, anything that. Impedes the flow of water can really create quite a hazard, so that's the reason that this is uh, being designed the way it is, so that. Heaven forbid, there should be a flood in this area, the water can flow through and under the building, um, and hopefully not damage the 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 primary structure itself. The, there have been questions raised about the uh, the roof, um, and the the eaves. That are not quite in keeping with um. Necessarily what we've seen otherwise in the district, uh, there were some earlier questions about the location of windows that have been. Modified by the applicant to um, to be uh, sort of a mo- more coherent. Um, array of windows as opposed to what was in the initial application, um. I know there there are other architects on the board, um, I just want to ask if there were any concerns, um. About this finding uh, related to the uh, character or integrity as it relates to the district. Mister Hanlon.
Wanted to. I I don't feel as qualified as my comments to express my taste on architecture, so I won't. Um, but it certainly, this is an, this is a diverse neighborhood, there are houses of. Some are single family, some are two family, uh, they're very different sizes, some are pretty small and. And others are over fifty-five hundred square feet, uh, and I think it's the record is. Indicate that this house is not going to be as far as size is concerned, outside the. Outside what is is sort of customary in this particular neighborhood, and of course, to some extent. End of with it being right next to a park, it would mitigate any size things, but I I don't think there is a size issue. Uh, uh, there is a size issue there, um. I do think, I understand that the applicant is in a hurry to build, but. No, they were in a hurry to get a permit too, and look how long it's taken, so. I would like to have us consider some sort of a condition. That basically makes enforceable as far as part of the special permit. Um, the kind of action that Mr. Champa has uh, requested. Uh, between now and the time that that construction. Uh, construction begins, it seems to me that Mr. Palteer made a pretty good point. And safety is involved in that, and uh. The answer is not just to start quickly, but the answer is to keep things in good shape as best you can. Um, during the area, the intervening period of time, so I'm sort of include. Inclined to to just say that again, so that it's a condition of the permit and has the enforcement power that is. Is is there for other conditions.
Thank you, Mister Hanlon.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Mister LeBlanc.
Uh, I guess just to comment on your previous question to us, um. I think while the the style is uh, different than what the surrounding neighborhood is, I think when you look at Arlington, um. In a larger context, that a more modern style does appear here and there through uptown, so I don't think it's um. Against a general style that can be seen around town. Um, so from sort of my perspective, that's the way I see it, um. Especially, you know, just where modern architecture kind of is, um. We're not always having, we're not always finding ourselves keeping with a more traditional style, we sometimes like to mix it up. Um, so, um, I don't see too much of a problem with. Not fitting into the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Mister Baronowski.
Just add on Mister LeBlanc's comment, I took a walk around the neighborhood and at least over a little bit farther away, like in Lafayette. There are very modern, there's a very modern construction that looks, I mean. At least to the untrained lawyerly eye, somewhat analogous, so. Um, I would just add that to the record, that even this, even the environs, these kind of more modern constructions are popping up.
Thank you for that. Then the next uh, findings, the requested use will not be detrimental to public health or welfare, um. Know this is a, what they use that that's intended, um, and. Being a new structure that responds both to environmental. Uh, and energy requirements, uh, will certainly be beneficial to. Uh, public health and welfare, and the requested use will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood, um. It is a two family in a two family district, or I should say a two family in a district that supports two family, um, and so. Um, it will not be, um. Cause an excess use that would be detrimental, um. And so those are the required findings, um, so if the board were to. Uh, vote to approve, um. There would be conditions, there are the three standard conditions that were read into the record at the prior hearing, uh, so we'll not. Read those in a second time, um, did want to conclude a condition that per section five, four, two, B eight. The building must meet the hers requirement, um, in the zoning bylaw. Um, and then, um, as Mister Hanlon had noted, um. We would want to include a condition that the owner. Is to secure. The site. And. Big site, uh, secure the site immediately. As. Directed. By inspection services. Were there any other conditions that members of the board had wanted to impose?
Uh, Mister Chair, I have a question on a hers one. Uh, would it make sense to say the minimum requirement in the zoning bylaw? So that way. It leaves the door open for it to be better than. And it doesn't. Lead it to that, it's just, it needs to be exactly forty-four and be better.
Would it be meet or exceed, or?
Yes, so- something along those lines, um, as long as it sort of leaves it open that it can be better. By law requires.
See the minimum. So the building must meet or exceed the minimum hers requirement in the bylaw.
Sounds good.
Great. Anything else? Would ask Mister Hanlon if he'd be willing to supervise the drafting of a decision in favor of approval for a special permit?
I would.
Thank you for that, okay, then. Uh, so we have two votes that we need to take on this application, um. The first would be to, um, withdraw. Variance, the variance request.
Mister Chairman, will you hereby withdraw without prejudice our variance request?
So I moved that the board accept the withdrawal of the variance application for uh, one oh three Thorndike Street, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mister Hanlon, so this is a vote of the board to accept the withdrawal of the variance request, uh, so Mister DuPont. Mister Hanlon? Mister LeBlanc? Mister Baronowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, um, just note for the record that, um. Mister Holly had missed one of the sessions, I don't think you had mullered in on that, had you?
I don't think so, I'll have to check that, but yeah, right, okay.
But it is an affirmative vote of five members of the board, uh, so then the next vote, uh. Would be that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington moves to close. The public hearing for docket three, eight, three, six, one, oh, three, Thorndike Street.
Second.
Thank you, Mister Hanlon. So, um, vote of the board to close, Mister DuPont?
Yes.
Mister Hanlon?
Yeah.
Mister LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mister Baronowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes, we are closed on one oh three Thorndike Street.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate your time and support, thank you.
Organize my. Papers here. Okay, so next item on our agenda this evening is docket. Number. So this piece of paper, um, then go back to the, here. Three, eight, five, two, thirty-six Glen Avenue, uh, this is a continuation of a hearing from a prior meeting. Um, this will be the fourth appearance um, on this hearing, at the end of the last hearing, um. There was a request from uh, the board of the applicant to uh. Make a sort of a final, um, decision on. Uh, how the buildings, so the. Effectively, this is an existing structure, there's a, an addition being constructed, and there's a question about the relationship between the two. And whether it met the requirements uh, for a duplex, and the board had requested that the applicant uh, contact. Uh, spectral services in regards to that question, uh, subsequent to that, um. I'd had a conversation with the building inspector just to let him know that this would happen, uh, we discussed the property, he took another look at it. And there was a a letter that was issued, uh, that is in the the record on Novus, um, and. I will go ahead, um, just quickly. Bring this up, so, um. Waiting for it to open. So he notes that after reviewing the drawings again, the proposal most closely aligns with the definition of a two-family dwelling. The garage and entrance from the basement to the garage of unit one are located underneath unit two. While the garage may not be part of the dwelling unit as defined by our zoning bylaw, it is undoubtedly part of the dwelling. It is not uncommon for a proposal not to match the zoning bylaw definitions word for word. Historically, in these situations, we use the most similar use, which is a two-family dwelling. Let me know if you have any questions, um. So with that, um. I've, I think the board should, um. Consider this application as a two-family rather than as a duplex, um. Which, uh, and as stated by the the building inspector, this structure does meet the requirements of a two-family. Uh, where part of one unit is above part of the other unit, um. And so I just want to give that background to what has happened in between, and at that, I would, um, turn to Ms. Mahoney if she could, um. Bring us up to speed, I know that you have revised drawings that were submitted.
Yes, hi, thanks for hearing us again this evening. Um, I can share my screen, I didn't really want to. Take you through the drawings again, um. Basically, we have reverted to the drawings from two times ago on July eighth. With some modifications to the open space that were done this past time. Um, so. I just, yeah, in in light of that information from inspectional services and. A new comp that we have been, um. Privy to at thirty-nine Highland Road, that Jack will show you, which is very similar to our property, it's basically an L shape. Um, so this, this layout is thirty by thirty-eight, there's no notch, and it has. Um, an extension in the rear here of six foot eleven, so twenty-three foot one. Is overlapping, and I I don't think that that really matters, but just so you know. Um, and then I just want to emphasize a few things, which is that, um. We didn't initially go to inspectional services about whether it was a two-family or, um. A duplex, you know, our initial was, we were sent for a special permit because of the size of the addition. So that is new information, and that's, it's great, it's good to hear, just to clarify it, um. I do want to emphasize that we are increasing the amount of usable space on the property. We are increasing the amount of permeable area on the site, so theoretically, the land should actually absorb more water. Um, we're adding landscape to improve the property and the streetscape itself. Um, we're using high-quality materials, original details from the original unit. Um, and, you know, taking off all the asphalt siding that's there. Um, it's really, it's gonna look very nice, um, and we're fixing an eyesore of a torn up. Accident-prone private drive on the side that will still be able to be utilized by neighbors for walking. So I think there'll be a lot of improvements on the site, um, we're not using any retaining walls or. Changing the way the water moves around through the use of retaining walls, um. So I think we've listened to some of the comments that have been made as well, um, and we're trying. You know, I think the developer here, Jack and Aram are really, they're trying to be good neighbors. And with that, I'll turn it to Jack to talk about the comps.
Thank you, Lizzie, um.
Thank you, Mister Jordan.
If I can also share. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, is it in good size?
Um, if you could focus on the plan portion, I think that would be helpful.
Uh, sure, so this is, um, through the help of Colleen, we're able to find. Uh, thirty-nine Highland Ave, um, which is a two-family, it looks like this application was in two thousand and fifteen. Um, it's very similar to the proposal we have in terms of that, uh, there is an existing structure, existing garage. Uh, the proposed addition is a side unit. Um, with some overlap in the back and and this partial, partial on the back and somewhere on the side, um, very sizable unit. And if I. Go to the next slide. Um, this is what that looks like, um, so this was the original home, uh, the. And and there was a side unit addition here, um, I couldn't find the original square foot of the existing. And and there was a side unit addition here. Um, I couldn't find the original square foot of the existing in terms of GFA of the existing home. Uh, but the total combined is sixty six fourteen on an eighty seven twelve lot size, which puts that ratio at about seventy six percent. Um, and our proposed Glen Ave is at a seventy two percent. Um, so again, this is a two family uh side by side. Uh, very similar to um the proposal for thirty four thirty six Glen Ave. Any questions here?
Questions to the board? Seeing none. Um. Should go ahead and stop the share on that.
I would.
Or unless you have another comment on it.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, uh, I think if it wasn't clear, I just want to communicate. I think in in the definition of two family, um, the overlap is not a requirement. Right? And which what enables this? However, the, yeah. I just want to kind of make that. No, I did have a slide, but. To quantify it, if the board is interested in those numbers, but it was uh very similar to what we have as well.
Okay. Yeah, um. Are there questions uh from the board? We've heard this application. We've heard, had several sessions on this, so I think a lot of the questions have probably already been. Um, brought forth, but is there anything? Else from the board at this stage? Seeing none, um.
Before, before my turn. Uh, yes, sorry, Mister Chair. Uh, before my turn is up, I know you had requested uh for. Myself to address uh some of the concerns of the neighbors as well.
Mm hmm. Yep.
Miss Mooney recap that. I did have some of their details to share, but I'll let you uh let me know when it is a good time for that.
Uh, why don't you go ahead and do that now?
Okay, um. So I think there were some concerns about transparency. There was a letter from one neighbor, uh Christine Arville. Um. And just wanted to. This is, this is a special permit, so we submit the special permit and then the town notify the budding neighbors. And then when we go through permitting, uh assuming this gets approved, um then again, we then we will send out a neighbor tell the letters, but for a special permit that's handled by the town. Uh, scale of the addition was a concern, um and there's precedence for additions of this size from like seventy four to eighty two percent uh. Of GFA to uh lot size. Uh, this project's only at seventy two percent. Um, and if. If we build by right, the structure, it's seventy two percent of the structure that we could build if we built by right. Um, with with we demolished the existing structure, um some environmental concerns, um. You know, we we've addressed it with the conservation commission. There we're we're not in the buffer zone of of the nearby stream. Um, the existing, as Miss Mooney had mentioned, you know, existing land has zero open usable space. We're. We're creating over two thousand square feet of it. Uh, no trees will be removed. Uh, and we will submit a per uh a tree plan. Uh, as the town uh permitting process requires, uh to protect the tree that's town owned in in the front of the home. Uh, there's no other trees on the property. Um, and in line, you know, I think there were some concerns about uh if the garage is demolished, what kind of like pest control there will be? That's part of the permitting process as well. We'll follow the rules. Uh, there's orbiting control uh implemented before demolition happens. Um, and again, the rear yard is gonna have minimal regrading, uh that will not impact the flow of the water. Um, there was concerns with neighborhood access at Emerson Road. Uh. You know, we spoke with engineering, uh repair Emerson Road is independent of the special permit process, but for for full transparency. Um, plan to pave it up into the driveway. Um, and turnout area, uh not to exceed uh the. Uh, anything necessarily more beyond that and definitely not farther than our abutting lot line, excuse me. And of course, neighbors will continue to have foot access to the improved Emerson Road. Uh, there was concerns around harmony with the neighborhood. I think uh. From an architectural standpoint, uh you know, front porches are gonna be reestablished. Uh, the addition will carry the same architectural style. Uh, existing asphalt setting will be removed. We're gonna use a clapboard and and shingle uh finish uh. Which is a time stamp of the original architecture. And there was concerns about uh the burden on sewer and stormwater. Uh, we're adding. In regards to stormwater, we're adding four hundred and sixty three square feet of more permeable area as as a net result. Um, that will improve. Uh. I know there was concerns about fixtures, but the property does remain a two family, so it's two households. Um. And so that that's and, you know. It's, there's no proportional relationship to that, you know, it could be its household dependent, I think, water usage. Um, there's photo documentation shared from Kimball uh regarding uh the sewage concerns. Um, I just want to address the neighbors. I, you know. It's been discussed. I think that's the responsibility of DPW. Um. I don't think we're doing anything to 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 add to that in a significant or meaningful way. Um, and then there is uh concerns about tree pruning for some trees on the abutting property line in the rear. Um, and you know, we'll work with the neighbors that were concerned. I think it was at thirty seven Kimball. Um, so the trees will need to be pruned. Uh, we can communicate in terms of. Um, if there is a specific pruner that you would like to hire, um, we can use our landscaper so forth. Um, but that is something we do plan to do and we can communicate with you on making sure that's done. Uh. In in the right manner. And that's all I had. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions from the board in regards to? Any of those points? Just been jotting notes and putting them into form of conditions. Um. So with no further questions at the moment, um. I will go ahead and. Uh, open this hearing again for uh public comment. Uh, remind everyone, public comment is taken as release the matter hand. Should we direct it to the board for the purpose of informing its decision? I would ask members of the public who are wishing to speak, uh first, uh. Remember to include your name and address for the record. Um, and also try to encourage you to um. Tailor your comments to the testimony that we've received this evening. Um. And with that, uh I will go ahead. The first um. Hand up is uh Louis Dalvin.
Hi, this is Louis Dalvin, thirty three Kimball Road. I'm a direct the butter of the property in question. And I submitted a letter yesterday to the board to clarify my thoughts on the whole. All of the questions that have been raised. And basically, I've come to the conclusion and and in discussion with my wife Gina Sonder, we've come to the conclusion that. Really, this project deserves to go forward uh with, and my concern was. About the precedent it sets for other properties of similar size and with similar um. Uh, proposals that might occur in the future that kind of break the mold of what the zoning bylaws would seem to say. And. Seeing the property on Highland that uh Jack showed us just recently, it absolutely seems like that horse has already left the barn. And this is simply following a precedent that's already been set, which I might consider regrettable, but uh it's, it is what it is. So that's all I want to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Dalvin. Um, Doctor Brooks.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Who can?
So, yes, uh, Doctor Daniel Brooks, I live at forty five Kimball Road. I am a direct butter. Section three point three point three, part B of the zoning bylaw states that one of the criteria for granting a special permit. Is that the requested use must either be essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. I assert that despite the statement submitted by the applicant, none of these requirements are characteristic of the project and this require and this criteria has not been met. The owner has falsely claimed without supporting evidence that there is quote, no demand for housing with their current building's unit size. They claim that in order for a family to live there or for the property to be desirable for long term ownership, it is necessary, necessary. For them to build an entire second building on the lot to create units with more GFA than many people's single family homes in the area. This claim directly conflicts with the fact that each of the two units for this project. Are set to be similar in size to the entire two family building currently being considered for Thorndike Street that was discussed earlier this evening. In reality, there is no shortage for the demand of the current structures floor area, including by families with young children. On the contrary, the owner's current plans call for extremely large units that will actually result in the renovated property. Being at least twice as expensive as any other home in the neighborhood, including single family homes. And then individual units being too expensive for most families to be able to afford living there. Without having either a dual income from tech fields or a large trust fund. Low income and affordable housing is essential to public welfare. A simple renovation to bring the existing structure up to code or to modernize it could be considered essential to public welfare. The project we have been discussing, adding an entire additional building is not essential in nature. In fact, it is probably best described as an ex- as an extravagant luxury for an ultra wealthy future part time resident. As for whether or not the project is desirable to the public or its welfare, I believe the public record for this docket speaks for itself. In summary, I urge the board to consider the criteria set forth by section three point three point three, part B, to have not been met by this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Brooks. Uh, next uh is, was Horvath just disappeared? Miss Horvath, did you want to address the board?
Yes, thank you for taking my question, Mister Chairman.
Absolutely.
So, uh.
I just need your address of the record.
I'm sorry, this is Julie Horvath of thirty seven Kimball Road and I am in a direct, direct a butter as well. So, in um the earlier. Um, slide that they presented to us on Highland Avenue. I'm familiar with the building, having driven by it quite often, but I would like to know how many, it looks more like an in-law addition, you know. Quote unquote, like a large addition um or like an ADU. So I'm just curious how many rooms, what what the room count was, the bedrooms, the bathrooms. So to me, that looks more like. An addition. And to say that it's actually similar to this addition that's proposed is not correct because. This addition is going to come off, they have to come down a driveway, a, you know, a paper road and take a right into a garage. It's not straight in off of Highland Avenue like that one, which would be straight in off of Glen Ave if they did it that way. Um. That's my first comment. My second comment would be, uh, in agreement with Doctor Brooks. This is not creating any affordable housing. I know that that's not what the developer was setting out to do. However, as a Realtor. Of twenty four years in Arlington, we are trying to create more housing for people who can actually afford it and not low income even, I mean. People of moderate income can't even afford to live here. So it would be, I think, very attractive. To add on to that property by just enlarging the kitchens. I've I've been in that property. You just. Unlarge the kitchens, make maybe an in-law or an ADU and you're creating something that people are really looking for. Um, thank you for taking my question.
Thank you. Are there other? Members of the public who would like to address this application? So please raise your hand, otherwise we'll go ahead and. Close the public comment for this hearing. We'll go ahead and close. Okay, um. So thank you all for your comments. Um, on the Highland Avenue, um, I was actually a new member. Of the board when that was approved. I believe Mister Dupont was a member of the board at that time as well. Um. The initial proposal from the applicant was to take an exact copy of the original building and just. Set it immediately adjacent to what was there before. And so we had sort of worked with them to make it look more like an addition than quite literally. Two of the same house glued together. Um. And at the time, there are two, it is two full uh units. Um. And I know that they were. There's sort of a a semi in-law suite in there, but it doesn't meet the requirements for an ADU because of that time the ADU. Uh, hadn't been passed and so it couldn't technically have an extra unit, but they did effectively have two and a half families, I think, in there. Uh, because one of the owners had their parents um staying with them as well. So I think that was how that was um. Originally conceived. On that site, um. And then just to. Um. Go back looking through, uh appreciate the letter that uh Mister Dalvin had uh submitted to the board. Um. The the board will definitely discuss uh as Doctor Brooks said before, the. Compliance with section three three three, which is required for all special permits. Um. And um. To to Ms. Horvath's question, uh certainly. Yeah, we all wish that there was a better mechanism for creating affordable housing in town. Um. This board. If there's a, if any time there's a comprehensive permit, those projects that come through the forty B process, uh the board is. That there's state laws requiring that there be compliance with. Uh, a certain number of affordable units. If a development in town has six or more units, it's required to have affordable units. Um. But unfortunately, there's no, there's no requirement, there's nothing enforceable by the zoning bu- uh board. To require affordability or to uh specifically limit. Uh, the scale of of houses and units um that otherwise meet the requirements uh. Either for a general permit or for a special permit. Um. Should they meet all the other requirements? So, um. I'm sure this will come up as we move forward discussing the um. The 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 findings that the board would be required to make. Um. Mister Join, I see you wished would. Address the board?
Yes, um, Mister Chairman, uh just to answer some of the questions raised, uh. At thirty nine Highland Ave, it's a four bedroom, two bathroom. Uh, it was fourteen hundred forty two square feet of additional footprint that was added. In our proposal, we're about three hundred square feet less than that at eleven forty. Uh, additionally, the um mention about our driveway using the paper street uh for thirty nine Highland Ave, there was a whole new driveway cut in. Uh, so there was a curb cut on Highland Ave to access that new garage underneath the existing property, so not so different.
Thank you. Um. So for the board, what it has before, so this is a special permit. Um. Under five four two B six, so this is a large addition. Um. Which is uh any addition that is larger than seven hundred fifty square feet um in order for um. The board to approve such a, uh such an addition. Uh, there are. Three additional considerations that are required under the zoning bylaw in addition to the standard findings under section three three three. Um. The first is that the alteration or addition is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. Uh, the second is that the board, in making that determination, the board must consider the dimensions and setbacks in relation to abutting structures and uses. And that uh the board is to consider conformity with the purposes of the bylaw. I don't recall if we. Had reviewed the the purposes of the bylaw, the prior hearing or not. But just uh briefly, to remind everyone, the purpose of the bylaws is to promote the health, safety, convenience, morals, and welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Arlington, to lessen congestion in the streets, to conserve health, to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, to provide adequate light and air to prevent the overcrowding of land, to avoid the undue concentration of population, to encourage housing for persons at all income levels, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other requirements, to protect and preserve open spaces as a natural resource for the conservation of natural conditions for flora and fauna, and to serve as urban amenity for scenic and aesthetic enjoyment and recreational use, to conserve the value of land and buildings, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town, to achieve optimum environmental quality through review and cooperation by the use of incentives, bonuses, and design review, to preserve and increase its amenities, and to encourage an orderly expansion of the tax base by utilization, development, and redevelopment of land. Is made with reasonable consideration to the character of the district and to its peculiar suitability for practical uses with a view to giving direction or effect to land development policies and proposals that the redevelopment board, including the making of Arlington a more viable and more pleasing place to live, work, and play. That is the established rea- uh purpose for the zoning bylaw. So before the board starts in on the findings, are there any questions from members of the board? Okay, um. So we'll start with the conditions for a lo- uh the findings, excuse me, for a large addition. Um, so the first is that the alteration or addition is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity. So taking the the um the uses part first, um, this would maintain, so this is an existing two-family house, this would uh remain a two-family house in a district with two-family houses. Um, so the use, um, I think the board could find that they the use is in harmony. Whether if the addition is in harmony with other structures and uses in the vicinity, as the the applicant had noted, they did make uh they did take the some time to uh make sure that the detailing of the addition is in keeping with the addition. Uh, with the original building, the addition is a set lower on the property to minimize its appearance. Although it is is large for the district, it is a lar- a very large lot as well. And sort of thinking proportionally between gross floor area and the size of the lot. It's my sense that the building itself is not oversized. Um, I do appreciate that uh it is a, it does have a a large number of bedrooms, it is ver- a lot of living space. Um, and that that is not necessarily conducive to um uh maintaining a wide variety of income levels in the neighborhood. But I think as is this is seen in the town in general, uh, there is a general shift right now towards um taking uh these smaller, more affordable homes and converting them into larger um and much more expensive homes. And uh I would just note for the record that I have had this conversation with past uh directors of planning as to whether the board has the authority to to essentially say that the prop- that the creation of units that are more expensive is detrimental to the town, and I have been advised that I that is not a statement that the board is allowed or a finding the board is allowed to make. And so we will, unfortunately, that's not something we're, oh, we would be considering. The board is to consider the dimensions and setbacks in relation to abutting structures and uses. The although the site does have an existing non-conforming uh side yard for the existing building, the proposed addition is entirely within the bounds um of the site and is does not encroach on on any of the either, any of the the side lot lines or the front yards. There uh the existing houses that are along Kimball, um this, although this will be on that side of the pro- they are moving in that direction on the property, is a very large, open lot, um, and it you know, it's not lost on the board that the neighbors have enjoyed um the openness of the site for an extended period of time. Um, and that this, the 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 owner of the property is looking to make changes on the property. And but that is uh you know, the within their purview and to come before the board to seek permission to do such a thing. And consider the conformity with the purposes of the bylaw. So the as as was read into the record before, um this does a number of things. It does maintain um adequate light and air, both for the proposed, the existing building, the proposed addition, but also uh does not crowd the adjacent buildings, and so preserves that. It may, it will not uh uh create an undue concentration of population. It will probably increase the number of inhabitants in the house uh due to its size. Excuse me, um. It will encourage housing for persons at all income levels, not necessarily um at all levels, but will, this will encourage um uh some degree of housing, uh facilitate adequate provision of transportation, water, um, and other public requirements. Protect and preserve open spaces as a natural resource. It does preserve uh a large portion of the site um as open, and as the applicant has stated, there will be um efforts taken to preserve uh the trees and to uh not do, take any actions that would um endanger the trees that are uh along the property line um and enjoyed by uh by the neighborhood in general. This will uh been improved environmental uh quality. The building will need to meet all the modern requirements for uh energy consumption and use. Um, as a large addition, it will need to um be all electric. It won't be allowed to um have uh connections to fossil fuels. So um it'll be a lot of environmental um encouragements there, uh encourage an orderly expansion of the tax base. So certainly by the creation of a larger, more expensive building will increase uh the financial benefits to the town. Through the provision of an increase of an expanded tax base. And part of the requirements for the three, three, three will be considering the reasonable consideration of the character of the district's peculiar and its peculiar suitability for particular uses. Are there any members of the board who have concerns about uh the ability to make the findings under large addition, section five, four, two, B six? That moves us to the required findings under section three, three, three. Where the board needs to find that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. Um, the first is that the requested use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district. Uh, this um addition would, is a large addition and um is allowed by special permit under section five, four, two, B six. And next is the requested use is essential or desirable uh to the public convenience or welfare. I would ask um one of the more lawyerly members of the board if they could address what it's, what the, what is specifically meant by a requested use being essential or desirable to the public convenience. They could. Meaning that more sort of a general sense rather than in a specific instance, what?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Well, I, if Mr. Bar- Mr. Baranowski is the professor, he he's got the better.
I was gonna chime in, but I I defer to people who are on the, who've been on the board longer as well, so.
Well, as I read, it's, it, the key word is desirable, right? Because uh uh it just makes clear that it, even if it's not essential, it means that it has to be desirable to some element of the public convenience and welfare. And that is a very broad term. Lots of things are are conducive to the public convenience and welfare, including a very large number of the specific purposes of the of the bylaw. And we have traditionally, uh and in many, many opinions, treated making homes more usable to their owners uh as a part of what the public convenience means because of the way in which if you make each individual owner more satisfied with what they have, then in the aggregate, that's a benefit and a benefit to the town. So this is really conducive to a kind of a cost benefit analysis. What are the advantages of this? Paying some attention to what the advantages, to the public, but not necessarily excluding anything that's to the private advantage of the individual also, um and weighing that against any adverse impacts that uh uh that the board may find exist.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Baranowski, do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Guess so.
Okay. So the next uh is uh requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. Uh, this is a little bit of a unique case because the access to the driveway uh will be from what is currently a paper street that is um not uh well, that was at one point improved and has since uh sort of reverted back to a more naturalistic state. The applicant is proposing to re-improve um Emerson Road to provide access. I think it would behoove the board to include some conditions um in regards to that because the board has very limited ability to dictate anything in regards to how paper streets are 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 used or addressed. But this will uh cause the closure of the existing parking lot that is on Glen Avenue and uh will have a new driveway coming off of Emerson, so it will sort of change the the route. Um, many of the uh the residents especially um on Kimball have noted that uh this, that Emerson Road is really used as a pedestrian way in a lot of cases, um and currently does have uh is occasionally tried to be traversed by um I bel- I believe uh snowplows in winter, thinking they can go through where it really doesn't go through. Um, and so I I think that the it would, in order for the board to find that um it doesn't impair pedestrian safety, I think it would be uh good for the board to consider uh if there's any conditions in regards to uh signage or any other notations that would be helpful um in sort of pre- preservation of uh pedestrian safety on Emerson. Uh, next is that the use will not overload any public system. Uh, so there's been a lot of discussion on this case. Certainly from the standpoint of uh uh, you know, domestic water, inputs of electricity, things like that. It will not have any uh will not overload any systems. Um, this will be because of the the size, this will no longer uh be allowed to have connections for natural gas. So uh certainly that will not be overloaded, uh which really leaves the the stormwater and the the sanitary water. So the stormwater, um, I know the applicants have taken some efforts to uh make sure that they are under the three hundred fifty additional square foot threshold uh that would be required for um engineering to review any stormwater plans. The, in past conversations with the en- with the town engineer, he has stated that um, he believes that the requiring review by uh engineering would be a an allowed condition. So I think that's something the board needs to consider if that's something that it would want. Um, on the um, on the domestic sewer side, this unfortunately is a townwide mess. And I I feel, I feel badly for the the residents, especially on Kimball. This is, has been a big learning curve for myself in terms of how um Arlington's wastewater uh moves through town and is really distressing that uh this neighborhood has sort of become a pinch point for this. Uh, because it is not, it it is not subject to its own creation. It's it's a townwide problem that unfortunately manifests itself in this area. The additional inputs from this property uh would not overload the system, in my opinion. Um, other members of the board are free to to disagree. But I think it would be um good to sort of to, in general, to bring this condition up um and to to try to bring it to, bring it more to the attention of the the town leaders and our our members of Congress um here in the state to try and see if there's a way to move the MWR to make some adjustments or to do something to improve this. Unfortunately, that's outside our jurisdiction um on the zoning board, but I I hope this is something that could be brought before the the select board. The the next is special regulations for the requested use are fulfilled. Uh, those are the requirements under section five, four, two, B six, which we previously reviewed. Uh, the requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. Although it's a a larger sized addition, um, it is proportional to the size of the lot, and I think it does a good job in terms of uh trying to stay nestled in the site. It's not bigger and taller than the existing building. Um, it does sit down in the side a bit. Um, it does seem to be well detailed. Um, unlike some other applications we see, so I I don't think it impairs the character integrity. Uh, requested use will not be detrimental to the public health or welfare. The the extension of the, of the existing house, the large addition, um should not have any impact on the public health or welfare. And then the requested use will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood. This would retain uh two families living on the property, which is what is there today. And that would uh not be detrimental, in my opinion. So those are the my proposed findings. Are there any questions from the board? Or are there any concerns with any of those findings? Okay, so should the board choose to vote in favor? Um, there are three standard conditions that would be included. Those were read into the record earlier this evening, so I will not read them in again. There are several additional conditions which I would uh want to recommend based on the conversation that we've been having over the past two meetings. The first would be that the board requires the applicant to work with the town engineer to comply with the town stormwater management bylaw. Um, I know that they may, because of the size of the property, they may not be required to do so, but I think it, given the site and the the water issues that they have, I think it would be that additional level of review would be important uh for the neighborhood, and so I I think the board should require that. Um, the applicant had mentioned it, but the board requests the applicant work with the tree warden to address compliance with the tree protection and preservation by law, uh that is required as a part of the application process, so that will um necessarily happen anyways. But um I would want to include that. Um, and then uh so that, those would be numbers four and five. Uh, so then uh number six over the proposed work on Emerson Road is beyond the jurisdiction of the board. It is a responsibility of the applicant to follow all applicable law in improving the paper street. Public access is to be maintained. So essentially, the board cannot approve the repaving of the street, but the applicant would like to do so. So it just just says that um we can't say you can or can't do it, but um we would want public access to be maintained. we would want public access to be maintained and you need to follow all applicable laws. Number seven would be that no trees along the boundaries of the property are to be damaged or disturbed without consultation with the abutting neighbors. I believe you had noted that there was some trimming that may need to happen. And so just to make sure that, as you had noted, that that would involve the neighbors in those discussions to make, to include that as a condition. And number eight, the applicant is to provide signage at Glen Avenue, excuse me, at the Glen Avenue end of Emerson Way, Emerson Road, noting it is not a throughway. So just in, just so that the people don't try to take vehicles down that, that route is, as is provided in photos by the abutters, it does become just a narrow pedestrian path after the edge of this property. So just making sure that that kind of signage is provided to that effect.
And just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, would that signage need to be at the interface?
At the edge of Glen.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Are there other conditions that the board feels would be appropriate in order to approve this application? Being none. So we have, so what we have is the reviewed the findings or would be required. We have stated eight conditions for approval. Mr. Hanlon, I believe I have agreed to write the decision, but would you agree to supervise the production of an, of a decision in favor of approval?
Yeah.
So with that, I will move, is there any, any other information that members of the board feel it needs and before it is able to make a decision? Seeing none, I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington close the public hearing in docket 385236 Glen Avenue.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Baronowski. So Mr., so roll call vote of the board. We have Mr. DuPont.
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Hanlon, are you eligible to vote on closure?
I'm, yeah, I'm, well, I'm not yet. Possibly I am, but I'm planning to mull in on this. So I will be available to vote on the final decision.
Okay. So I think we're good. All right. So with that, we are closed on docket 385236 Glen Avenue. Thank you all for, for appearing before the board so many times, both the applicant and especially the residents. And we will have a vote on the final decision at an upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you. Next on my agenda for this evening is docket 386067 Foster Street. I note that Mr. LeBlanc is recused on this hearing because he is a neighbor. So this was before the board prior with a different docket number, seeking a special permit after discussion with the applicant with inspection services. It was re-advertised as an appeal of the decision of the building inspector. And so Mr. DiCilio is back in front of the board with the same project with slightly different fringe around it. So Mr. DiCilio, good evening. And if you could just remind the board what it is you are intending to do?
Thank you. I mean, good evening to y'all. I am looking to replace a, a 16 foot stretch of fence along the backyard. It's a aluminum fence. I had posted a photo a long time ago to the site, but you know, if it's not handy, it's, it's basically this. So I'm, I'm looking to replace that with a privacy fence. What I'm looking to do is do a, a seven foot fence. The six foot would be a wood privacy with a, a one foot wood baluster on top. The extra foot I'm looking for in order to, well, that one extra foot makes a huge difference. It might sound surprising, but it, it does a great job and it's efficacious in blocking out, I guess, sightlines from one yard to the next. The photo that I had taken was actually from the ground level, by the way. It's, it's more pronounced if you were standing on the deck of the first floor, the second floor. So that's what I'm looking to do. The, the baluster top, you know, it offers a little bit of privacy, I suppose, but it's more about aesthetics, basically for me, my neighbors and anyone else within, I guess, viewing distance of it. So that's the, that's the, the goal here. That's what I'm trying to do.
Great. Thank you very much. So I'm just gonna quickly. So this is again, this is that photo that applicant had shown us with the, the fence that he's looking to replace. This is toward the idea of the kind of, the type of fence. I apologize. I've forgotten in the intervening weeks to rotate it. But that is the intended style.
Yeah, yes. Fairly standard typical privacy with a baluster top.
So it would be six feet to this rail. And then with the, the open pickets and the top rail, that would be the additional 12 inches, correct?
That's correct.
And then, so this is the, the letters that the applicant had requested to build a fence. And the building inspector had said, after additional review, regret to inform you, the request cannot be approved as proposed. According to the zoning bylaw, fences that exceed six feet in height are not permitted within six feet of a property line without prior approval from the zoning board of appeals. Your proposed fence height and placement fall within this restricted zone and therefore violate the zoning requirement and cannot be approved. Proceed with your project. You would need to revise the plan to reduce the height of the fence or locate it outside of six foot setback from the property line. And so what is being sought is an appeal of this decision from the building inspector by the zoning board of appeals. So Mr. Hanlon, I believe you had done some, had an additional conversation with the inspector in regards to this question?
Chairman, I did. I asked the, when Mr. Trump didn't refer to any particular section of the zoning board bylaw, I asked him what particular section of the bylaw he reminded, he was referring to. And he said really that what he's referring to is really historical practice. That if we disagreed with doing that and that he would probably not enforce the six, the seven feet, the six feet limitation and the town meeting would have to make the bylaw actually support what the historical practice is. So there isn't any particular citation that supports any of the things that are said in his letter. That is to say, there's nothing in the bylaw that limits the, limits the height of the, of the, the height of the fence to six feet with or without moving it back six feet, which also is not part of the bylaw. And it's really just a matter of common law of inspectional services that dates back to long before Mr. Trump's tenure. We used to have a lot more of that. But at this point, it's more or less untethered to any statutory basis in the bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So this is a very sort of straightforward request. Are there any questions from the board? See, now I'll go ahead and open this for public questions and comments. Just a reminder, public questions and comments are taken as to relate to the matter at hand should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing his decision. Those wishing to address the board can use the raise hand button under the react tab in the Zoom application, or if you're calling in by phone, you may dial star nine. You'll be recognized by the chair, asked to give your name and address for the record and given time for your questions or comments. So with that, we have a raised hand for Mr. Steve Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I, I understand that the, the building commissioner rendered a decision and I understand there was some more information based on the conversations folks subsequently had with Mr. Champa. I guess I would raise the issue here of clearly the building inspector has been following sort of a rule of thumb, common sort of standard practice, but not one that is necessarily written down in statute. I am worried a little bit about the precedence that a decision that was made in this case, a decision perhaps made for the applicant's request sets a precedence which perhaps may have not much of an end point. Thank you, Mr. Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Chairman?
Do you want to address that directly, Mr. Hanlon?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one, one thing that I had forgotten to say before. Mr. Trumpa really said two things, one of which is that there is a historical practice behind the, a historical practice behind enforcing a six foot limitation. But the other thing is his statement that unless it's approved in advance by the board of zoning appeal. But there's nothing that authorized it's a special permit for this. That's why we re-advertized it. So that the whole historical practice would be to, for him to, to reject it. And for us then to consider whether or not it was, it would be appropriate to allow it. And that part can't happen either under the statute because our jurisdiction is on special permits is limited to where that's explicitly in the bylaw. And in this case it isn't. So if we, if, if we could overturn this as a matter of overruling the, the decision of the board, but there's really no vehicle for us regularly to appeal these things. And I should just actually point out that this is the first time we've had a case like this in the time I've been on the board. Maybe Mr. DuPont and Mr. Klein have remember an earlier one. But when you, when you evaluate precedents, I think it's a little, this isn't one of the burning issues in town, right? It's, it's something that rarely happens. And that I don't really necessarily expect to see it again before Tom meeting can decide what it wants to do next year.
I thank you, Mr. Hanlon.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Moore?
I'd, I'd love, just like to thank Mr. Hammond for his input. That, that does make sense. I, I do worry about sort of practices, sort of rules of thumb that do get used in town, get applied, but don't always have basis in regulation warning. That when, when you do establish new precedents or a, a form of case law, meaning decisions which are are made that support doing one thing or another moving forward, precedences, precedences can sort of gain momentum and not necessarily, as I say, have like a definitive, definitive endpoint. So my, my concern is that perhaps if, if the board sees fit to approve this, and I know that this particular issue is a bit of a one-off and, and may however the board decides, of course, is what we've been for, that they might want to add a condition that expresses that fact that Mr. Sohnoff and not Mr. President said it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there other members of the public who wish to address this application for Foster Street? See, none. I will go ahead and close public comment. So what the board has before it, so the applicant is seeking to construct a fence that is seven feet tall on the property line that the building inspector has said that that is not permissible without approval from the zoning board. And so that decision has been appealed to the board. So the question before the board is, does the board feel that the, the decision of the building inspector is correct with the zoning bylaw or incorrect? And as Mr. Hanlon had pointed out, the board does not have authority to provide a special permit in regards to a fence in this case. Board does not have, there's nothing in the bylaw that says that the board is authorized to provide a special permit for a fence. And there's very little in the zoning bylaw in regard to fences in general. So I think the I, I would ask the, if there are any members of the board who feel, who have, who object to the board reaching a determination that the, the requirement to achieve a special permit for the zoning board of appeals is not authorized by the zoning bylaw. And there is nothing in the bylaw that prohibits the creation of a fence in excess of six feet along the property line and therefore the board requests that the the building inspector issue the permit for the fence as described in the application.
Mr. Rooster Chair?
Yes.
I'm, I don't have any problem with that. I actually just wanted to state for the record why I feel comfortable with that in this case. I think the zoning bylaws, you note, states very sparingly anything about fences. And when it does state, it doesn't address anything. It just doesn't address the situation. So there are seemingly situations where the zoning bylaw does contemplate five or six foot tall fences. And it's just not here. And it does seem a little, I agree with Mr. Moore that I'm hesitant to overturn practices kind of willy nilly, but on the other hand, I'm also hesitant to have practices that aren't tethered to the zoning bylaws. Given that that's, should be the first stop for people wanting to know kind of what they can and cannot do. So in this situation, this seems like an issue for town meeting to, to resolve in terms of if we've, if we want to have some kind of more limitation on the fencing. So that's, I just wanted to state for the record why I feel comfortable with the board saying, doing with the, with the chair outlined.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hanlon, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, I guess there are two things. One is I just, just in full disclosure, the building department does, or the special services does have a handout on this. Actually, I don't believe that you needed a permit for a fence, a building permit for a fence. And so there is a procedure, at least, for getting information from inspectional services if you know, if you know to ask for it. So it's not entirely hidden, although it's not found in the bylaw. I did see, I've always thought that the provision in the bylaw, it must be 5312B, which is the provision that normally that we think of largely as dealing with front yard fences that may impair visibility. But the lead in sentence to that is visibility for driveways, a fence, hedge, wall, sign, or other structure or vegetation may be maintained on any lot, provided that provided that it, in the front yard, no such structure should be over two and a half feet and so forth. So this, clearly the exception doesn't apply there. And it gives a fairly broad permission to have fences without putting any other limitations on the size. It does, the, the historical, in my view, the historical practice is not an unreasonable practice. And if Tom meeting said, let's just do that, that would be perfectly fine with me. I'd probably vote for that. The difficulty is, is that it doesn't, it isn't, it's a practice that doesn't stand The difficulty is, is that it doesn't, it, it isn't, it's a practice that doesn't stand on firm ground. And it needs to be made to stand on firm ground.
And also I would note that there is a provision under state law about nuisance fences, which are fences in excess of six feet that are found to be, as, if there are spite fences, I, this, the, I think the, the more appropriate term, which are, can be adjudicated as a civil matter under state law. So, you know, if somebody was to put up a ten-foot-high fence, not only would they be a foul of the requirement for structural engineering, but they would also probably be fa- be found to have erected a spite fence. So there is some provisions to sort of keep it in check. But I think, given the, the statements from the, from the board and the applicant, I think the the board would be able to find that as I stated before, that that there's, the, the board doesn't find anything in the zoning bylaw that prohibits the erection of this fence, and therefore the fence should be allowed to be erected. I would just check with Mr. Hanlon, is there, is your sense that we would, it's been a while since we have done an appeal. So I'm assuming we would still just close as normal and that we would issue a written determination to be approved at the following meeting? Is that? Okay. Great. Is there any additional information the board needs in order to reach a decision in this matter? Seeing none, Mr. Hanlon, would you be willing to coordinate the creation of a a decision in favor of overturning the decision? Thank you. So then with that, I will move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington close the public hearing in docket three eight six zero sixty-seven Foster Street. One second. Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So roll call vote of the board. I know Mr. Dupont was on there to the weather, and I think he was going to drop, and I appear that he has dropped. Okay. So, Mr. Hanlon? Mr. Holly?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we are closed on Foster Street. Yes.
Did Mr. Moore, uh, did Roger, was he present for this hearing?
I don't think he was present for this hearing. We had four members present, which is the statutory requirement. But I don't think he was here for this hearing.
Okay, I'm, I'm just concerned down the line when we actually have to vote on the hearing. That the four of us won't all be here at the next hearing. At the next thing. So that raises, that raises the question of how we're going to keep that up, approving the opinion.
That's, yeah, that's something I want to come back to at the end of the meeting. Okay, but we are closed on on Foster Street. So, Mr. Silvio, thank you so much for your patience as we go through this.
Thank you.
Quite welcome. With that, next up is docket three eight five five, one sixty-four Hillside Avenue. This is the first of two new hearings this evening. So if I could go ahead and ask the applicant to introduce himself and tell us what they are proposing to do.
Hi, my name is Bruce Ward. So I'm, I'm building a, a house, putting a second story on a house on Hillside Ave. So the plans were approved and everything, and I'm in the middle of building it. And I grew up in the neighborhood down on the corner of Hillside and Wachusett. Moved there in sixty-eight, so I kind of wanted to, to really keep the keep the vibe in the neighborhood of having a small front porch. And because it's a corner lot, the, the right side is on Prospect, and that's considered frontage as well. So that's going to be a plus twenty-five foot setback as well. So there's a lot of room, and I think it would really enhance the neighborhood. So I wanted to just throw it by you guys and get your take on it.
Thank you. I know Ms. Rollson, I believe, had to have reached out to you. We had a couple of questions about the application.
Yeah, I refiled some drawings and whatnot. I don't know if you have those with you or?
You. So the site plan, we, let me go ahead and open and
I can share if you want.
If you have them available, that'd be great.
Yeah, let me let me share. Hold on now. Juggle a couple of screens here. Can you see this?
Um, not yet. There it goes. Something's happening.
Can you see that drawing?
Yeah, I s- I see your background screen.
Oh, let's see. Hold on, let me move it over here. Sorry about that. Can you see it now?
Yes.
All right. Apologize. So, so originally the front door, we built up on the, on the existing ranch. So the front door was kind of right in the center. And it was going to just be a covered seven-foot, kind of typical landing, seven by six or whatever it was. And just aesthetically, I, the house bumps in up on the second floor just to give it a little less, a little contour and depth. So I moved the door over to the right a little bit. And I just wanted to add like forty square feet, so like five, the, the porch would be five feet by eight feet additionally onto that platform. And it's covered. It's just a shed roof.
And so that five by eight, those dimensions are on the plan at the bottom, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would note that the provided site plan, the survey plan does not show this porch.
Right. So the survey plan, let's go to my other this is the existing, and this is what I pulled the permit for.
Yeah.
And so what I'm just asking to do is basically this whole, this whole front platform just moves over to the right a little bit. And then an eight-foot by five-foot covered porch would be in front of the, the double windows that are there. I'll show you a picture of the house, how it stands right now. Let me get this over here. Let me sorry, I'm trying to juggle two screens here. Okay, so tough to see through a little bit, but can you see the, the house?
Yep.
Okay, so right behind the dumpster is the front door. And so that porch would just go to the end of that double window in the front on the right. Instead of being just a, a landing with a gable roof over it, it would be a shed roof that kind of protruded up into that indentation uh, under the second floor double window.
Okay.
So.
In the, does it tie into the roof over the garage or is it?
No, it's not going to. It's just going to go, it's not even going to go to the end. If you look at the corner. Oh, you can't see.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's going to end probably a foot from the right side of the double window. So there'll still be a corner board, you know, on the si- on the corner there, and there'll still be siding on the front of the house after the porch.
Yep.
And then that roof will that roof will just die out on the top. I can't wrap it around. It doesn't make any sense to wrap it around.
I just want to make sure we're reading the elevation correctly.
What I'm trying to do is, I, I'm trying to, I was trying to keep the, the depth and the, and the, you know, just give it some character. And I really, you know, as you go along, you kind of bob and weave a little bit, and it's like, wow, this would be a shame to not be able to sit out here. It's such a nice, it's such a nice lot. So that's why, that's why I'm proposing it.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the board? About what's being proposed?
Let me see if I can.
Go ahead and stop the share on that. Here we go.
Sorry about that.
No, no, no.
I was looking for it.
Any questions from members of the board? To just, for my sake, for to, so the porch itself, it's going to be open on the three open sides, correct? There's no, not enclosed.
It's all open with a, do a, typically it will do a tongue and groove wood ceiling up above.
Right.
With railings.
Unless there's anything from the board, we move on to public comment. So I'll go ahead and open this hearing for public comment. Public comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand, should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing our decision. You can use the raise hand button under the react tab at the bottom of the zoom screen, or if you're dialing in by phone, you can dial star nine. You'll be recognized by the chair, asked to give your name and address for the record and given time for your questions and comments. Are there any questions or comments in regards to this application, which is docket three eight five eight, one sixty-four Hillside Avenue? Uh, we have Mr. Steve Moore.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. I've been looking at the Google Street View and aerial as well, and there's a lot of disconnect between the street view shows age-wise and with aerial shows satellite view age-wise. I, I'm wondering if the applicant could expand a little bit on what's been happening with the trees on the corner of that suite between Prospect and Hillside.
Um, so I didn't take any, any trees down. I did a tree plan. I didn't take any trees down at all. There's a big pine tree on the corner. Uh, and then there's a really big pine tree on the back right corner. There's, they're all still there. There's a lot of scrub bushes on the right side on Prospect. So it kind of, it, it, it's kind of partially on my property and partially on the town's, you know, extending into the town's, would, would be a sidewalk. It's all grass there. And then there's a bunch of trees on the lot that haven't, that I'm not touching, birches and, and all that stuff.
Uh, great, Mr. Chair, that's, that's helpful. I, I do note that there, there's two street trees. And I assume they've been protected during the process of all the construction, which has already occurred.
Yep.
True.
Yeah, there's a little, uh, there's a new tree there too. They just put in probably a year or two ago on the left front. And there's an older maple, uh, that's kind of in rough shape, but it's still there and it's all good.
Yeah, I see it. Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate, uh, uh, thanks for filming in. I just wasn't fast enough on the draw here figuring out what was where and
No, that's fine.
Speaking of stuff. So I thank you for the work you did protecting the trees and doing the correct tree plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there other members of the public who would like to address this application? One sixty-four Hillside? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment for this meeting. Uh, excuse me, for this hearing. So what the board has before it, this is an application for a special permit under section five three nine D in the zoning bylaw, which allows to build upon it an existing porch or to expand it with a special permit from the Board of Appeals. There are no specific requirements under five three nine D, so it is just under section three, three, three for the findings that are required. As for any special permit, the general requirement is to find that the adverse effects that proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts. So the subsidiary findings, the first is required use is allowed or allowed by special permit in the district. As we noted, five three nine D allows the creation of this porch in the front garden setback with the approved, with a special permit issued by the zoning board of appeals. Uh, number two, the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. As was stated by Mr. Ward, it would be a shame to not have this porch in the front to allow the owners to sit out front and enjoy their yard and enjoy the community of their neighbors. And that kind of connection with the community is something that we do want to encourage as being very desirable to public convenience. Uh, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. It is adjacent to the garage, but as noted by the applicant, it doesn't create any walls or such that would impair the sightlines um, from this property. So the visibility of the sidewalk by cars entering and exiting should be okay and will not impair pedestrian safety. And there's no additional traffic congestion. The house remains as effectively as it is in terms of its use. Requested use will not overload any public system. The addition of this porch will not overload any systems. How special regulations for the requested use are fulfilled, as I noted before, there are no special regulations for this requested use. Uh, requested use will not impair the character or integrity of the district. As designed, it fits very well with the character of the house and the character of the, of the neighborhood, and should be a, a nice addition to the streetscape. Uh, requested use will not be detrimental to public health or welfare. Um, it provides a nice open space, has no impact on health or welfare, and will not cause an excess of use detrimental to the neighborhood, which really does not apply in this situation. Um, are there any questions from the board in regards to those proposed findings for this application? Seeing none. Should the board choose to approve this application? There are the three standard conditions that were uh, read into the record at the beginning of the hearing, uh, which would be included. And I wanted to ask the board if it felt strongly to include a condition that the applicant is to provide a revised survey plan showing the proposed eight-foot-by-five-foot porch. Um, because currently the survey plan does not match the, the set, the other plans and where this needs to be set and entered into the record of the registry of deeds. I just want to make sure that the survey plan is the correct plan.
I can definitely do that.
Are there any additional conditions that members of the board would want to include? Seeing none, I will ask Mr. Hanlon if he is willing to coordinate the, uh, the drafting of a decision in favor of approval.
I am.
Fantastic. So are there any members of the board who feel they do not have the required information in order to reach a decision in this matter? Seeing none, I move that the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington close the public hearing in docket three eight five eight, one sixty-four Hillside Avenue.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So roll call vote of the board.
Thank you.
This is to close. So, Mr. Hanlon?
Say, yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
You're a little blank?
Yes.
Mr. Branowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We are closed on one sixty-four Hillside Avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Brings us up to the next item on our agenda, which is docket number three eight six one, which is three fifty-one Apple Street. So if I could ask the applicant to please introduce themselves and tell us what they are proposing.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Dan Cameron. And I'm with, uh, I'm a surveyor with D and A Survey Associates out of Redding, Massachusetts. And I'm here assisting the property owner, Mrs. Joanne Corbett, um, owner of the property, three fifty-one Appleman Street. And Mrs. Corbett is on, is online as well. Mr. Chairman, can you, can you bring up the plot plan or is that?
I mean, just switch over to that in a sec. I mean, just switch over to that in a sec.
Okay, great. So, um, Mrs. Corbett, um, currently has, uh, parking essentially in, in a garage. On, uh, off of, uh, Appleton Street. And due to some health concerns, um, she now has people, uh, family members living with her and also others, um. That, uh, visit during the day. And parking is a concern. So. I was asked to prepare a, uh, we were asked to prepare a plot plan for a second, uh, driveway. Uh, and that would require a special permit under section six point one, uh, point one oh, and. The, the existing driveway, as you can see on the plan, um, you know, really can't be expanded. Uh, for a couple of reasons. One, um, it would sort of block the entrance, the main entrance of the house. And there's also a rather large, um, public shade tree. And, you know, given the, uh, the requirements to protect that, that tree, we, it really couldn't expand that, that driveway. And also. Uh, because the house is set back at twenty five feet, it really wouldn't be a legal parking space anyway, because it would be in violation of zoning by law. So the, the other option was to, you know, to. Bring a driveway in off of Wallaston Street. And as, as you can see on the plan, uh, based on the, on the, uh, the length of the driveway and the width and the vegetative. Buffer that we have abutting, uh, the property next door, it does conform, uh, to the zoning by law. Um, we did. Um, send this plan, um, a few months ago to, um, Mr. Carpenton, the town engineer, to get his comments and. And he said, uh, he had, he had one minor change. And he said, um, he would issue a street opening permit for, uh, for this driveway upon approval of a special permit. By, by, by the board. And also, uh, because this will exceed, uh, the threshold of three hundred and fifty square feet. Of, um, previous area, it would require, uh, it would fall into the, the, uh, the, the minor permit. Uh, requirements of the stormwater management system of the town. So we, we are proposing, uh, to install pervious pavers. Uh, but with the option that, um, we could also do a dry well and, and, you know, uh, conform to the town's requirements of that as well. That'll. That'll kind of, you know, be determined when we engage, when Mrs. Corbett engages, engages the, uh, the contractor. Um, as, you know, so I mean, hopefully this gets approved. Um, so in. Also, uh, with the driveway, um, there is no, uh, impact on any trees at all. Um, and we're also, uh, you can see from the configuration of the lot, we were able to still. Be within the guidelines of, uh, of open space, even with the construction of this driveway. Um, so, um, with that, I think that pretty much covers everything and certainly be open to any questions.
Right, thank you. Um, what is the width of the proposed buffer?
Uh, the width is wa- about a foot and a half. And if you. Wonder why it couldn't be larger, um, in working with Mr. Mr. Comphathorn, you know, we really wanted to limit the opening of the curb cut there. Um, so it goes obviously starting to approach, uh, you know, the intersection of the street. And the yet, the exist, we did show the existing driveway. On the property next door and, uh, that, that current driveway is about three to four, four feet away from the property line. So. You know, when, when it's all, which is a grassed area. And so when this is all done, you know, that we'll have probably about five feet between the, the two driveways.
Did the, did the town engineer express any concerns about the proximity to the intersection?
No, it, he, he said there was really no, uh, specific guideline and. Um, you know, we did keep the curb cut, uh, about, you know, just about one cow length back from, from the stop line. Because you can, as you can see that. There's some recent, you know, construction there in the last few years, creating the, the stop line and also the, uh, the crosswalk.
The one thing that the. The building inspector had pointed out to, to me was, so there's a required twenty five foot setback, um, at the front yard. For the district, um, and then a parking space needs to be eighteen feet deep.
Right.
Um, and so. The dimension, the, the length of the driveway that's indicated here as being forty one feet, that actually needs to be forty three feet. In order to. Cause the parking space cannot at all be within the front yard setbacks.
Right. You know what? We, we did amend that, um, and sent that in. Maybe that's, might have. Yeah, the only scene, yeah, we did change that forty three.
Yes.
This is probably dated, uh, on the twenty fourth. And I think on the twenty sixth to the twenty seventh is when the applicant put in a substitute that extended it to forty three feet.
Okay. Alright. Uh, let me see if this one has the revision. No, that's just the calculations.
My recollection of it is it looked exactly like the other one, but it had two more feet in.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. And then was there any concern about the, uh. The edge of the driveway not being aligned with the location of the curb cut?
No, I mean, I, I think, you know, there's, there's, there's enough room there, um, assuming a car will be pulled all the way to the end of the driveway. There's enough. Um, you know, room there to kind of angle it slightly as you're coming out. So it shouldn't be a concern.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm gonna go ahead and stop the share. Um, are there questions or comments from the board in regards to this application?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Just to. This is probably near neither here nor there because the Attorney General has not. Moved anything, uh, yet, but town meeting did amend this provision. Uh, and created a guideline of being twenty feet away from the intersection. It didn't, it wasn't, uh, it, it was only a guideline. It could, you, you, it's five town leading. CVA can put less. Uh, but that is sort of a general expectation and, and assuming that that's approved, that will. Be where we're going to in the future.
Okay. Yeah, I think where the stop line is set back from the intersection. Like there probably is twenty feet to the actual intersection of the streets.
Yes, there is.
I thought you were gonna mention the, the change in the width of the required setback. That, um. Is being increased. Or actually, intentions actually stipulated in the.
Yep.
In the bylaw, but that also is not in effect quite yet. Are there other questions or comments from the members of the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the hearing for public comment. Public. Comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand. It should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing, helping us inform our decision. Um, those members of public who wish to address the application can use the raise hand feature in, under the react tab at the bottom of the zoom screen. Or if you're calling in by phone, you may dial star nine, you'd be asked for your name and, and address for the record and given time for your questions and comments. So with that, uh, we have our first speaker, um, we have Roland Ginninglow.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. So I'm Roland Ginninglow. We live on three fifty six Appleton Street. So that's opposite, uh. Ms. Corbett's, uh, property. And, uh, I just want to state on behalf also of Caribbean and my wife, our support for this proposal. So Ms. Corbett, um, um, as, as was previously explained, due to her declining health, you know, has, uh. Had family members over basically at all times and they need some parking spots at times. Uh, they park an hour in our driveway. Uh, I mean, obviously they're asking before they do that. Uh, but, uh, that doesn't always work out because we have two cars ourselves. So especially in cases where, you know, uh, there's overnight parking. Or there's like winter storm or something, um, it would just be helpful for everybody if there were an additional, uh, parking space.
Thank you very much. Are there other members of the public who wish to address this application?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Um, my name is Jose Torres, one eighty one Wallaston Avenue. Um, my driveway will. Will abut, um, the driveway that's, you know, being proposed.
Okay.
Um, I, I have, uh, really in general, no problems, um, having the driveway there except I have one question.
Please.
My question would be, um, would it be possible in to, um, include the size of that buffer zone in the final drawings? So that we know, we know that's going to be maintained. And second, in that buffer zone, would it be possible, um, to plant? Uh, some bushes and things like that.
Thank you very much. We can definitely. Uh, discuss that option.
Great, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Then we also have, uh, Mr. Steve Moore.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Uh, I have, um, walked past this property many, many times. I live not far away. And, um. I, I've, I've got to say, this is one of the more dangerous intersections in town. There have been accidents here regularly. There have been physical injuries, life-changing injuries to people that have occurred. At this five-way intersection. Although the, the, unfortunately, the plot plan doesn't do it justice. It does not show at all the complexity. Of this reverse curve intersection. The town has tried to improve it multiple times now with traffic control measures to try and make it safer. Unfortunately, they've not been particularly successful because the properties are so close. To the street and the bushes a- around the area that, uh, owners have put up because. It definitely improves the look of the intersection, has definitely impeded unfortunately the sight lines, sight blind, I'm sorry. Um. Having an additional driveway that close to this very dangerous intersection is a mistake. I don't know why the town engineer would not have been concerned. That we were doubling the width of the driveway, which is already very close to this complicated intersection. By adding, uh, a, a curb cut that brings it even closer to the, the stop sign. For this particular, the end of Wallaston. And, uh, I, I don't, I don't get why there's no concern. Like I said, the town has tried to engineer this. Sadly unsuccessfully regularly. And the addition of this driveway for basically convenience, which is what we're talking about here. Although I empathize in Ms. Corbett's, the issues that, um, she may have with parking of, of. Uh, friends, neighbors, or people helping her out. She already has a driveway and unfortunately everyone would like more parking space related to their properties in town. Because supr- parking is so limited in many cases, this being a corner lot, it is, in fact, has two front yards. So you're trying to create another driveway and another, the second of the two front yards. Um, for what amounts to, to convenience. I think this is a mistake and I strongly oppose this, uh, this change. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address this application? Mr. Ginninglow, did you wish to make an additional comment?
Yes, is it possible to, um, um, to comment on Mr. Moore's comment? Or is that not, uh?
Um. Let me go ahead and pull up the, I have the Google map here. Um. So we can sort of show the intersection in question. So Appleton Street. Is here, this is the Wallaston. Um, Virginia comes in here, Wallaston here, we're looking at this parcel here. So I'm just gonna. See if I can convince Google to zoom in a little bit. I don't know. So you can see the curve here. So I believe it's the curb cut would be, the width of the curb cut would be extended to approximately this position here. So Mr. Ginninglow, um, you have a perspective?
And come, uh, just, just, just to, to put a perspective on what Mr. Moore stated. And I agree with him, that intersection is, uh, let's say very interesting. There's, there's, um, a lot of near misses that happen very frequently and, and sometimes also unfortunately accidents. It's typically from cars, uh, coming out of Wallaston Ave, for, so from, uh, north to south. And either trying to go straight or turn left into Appleton Street. And, uh, and then cars coming down Appleton Street that are just a little bit too fast to, you know, um, stop. And it's hard to see cars, cars coming out. Um, I, I'd have to say though, that I don't see, uh, and again, I share the concerns about. How dangerous this intersection is. I do not see though, how having the driveway there would make that. More, uh, more or less dangerous in any way, because the problem is the cars coming out of Wallaston Ave. And then turning onto Appleton or, or crossing Appleton. And so the, the driveway per se, um. And this is my opinion, uh, uh, would not, would not change any of that.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um. I'm gonna go ahead and stop the share here. Um, let's see, Mr. Moore has re-raised his hand. Um, so I'll take, Mr. Moore, I'll take one more comment from, from you on this. And then, uh, we'll move on.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that. Um, um, I appreciate Mr. Ginninglow's comments, uh. He's right that, that, that is where the problem comes from. People turning on to that intersection from. Uh, that piece of Wallaston. Um, it's just that this is already a complicated intersection. This adds a complexity for convenience. That's my. Basic concern. And I, I, I would suggest that the. Board request the town engineer to hold forth on how he feels this is not. An addition to an already complex situation. That is probably, I mean, we're not even thinking through carefully the areas. Um, um, can, uh, situations that might come from it, one more driveway in a five-way intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address this application?
Can you hear me?
But can, um, is Corbett?
Yes. I, I'd like to, um, just. Disagree with Mr. Moore, um. The driveway would be on a side street, which is not busy. It, it's probably more, um, challenging to pull out of the driveway on Appleton. That's more of a challenge than it would be pulling out of a driveway on. Wallaston. And, and it's not really just a convenience. I need people to live here with me. Because of my medical situation at the time. So I either have my daughter-in-law here or my grandson's here. But this, he has, he has a company car that he has to drive. And he has his own car that I have to park. And when it really becomes an issue is. During snow removal or street cleaning, when you want the cars off the street. We have no other place to put them. So I'd really. Ask that you really think about this and, and understand that this is something that is in need. And, and not. A convenience.
Thank you for that. Um, are there any other members of the public who would like to address this application? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment for this application. Um. So what the board has before it, so this is a request, uh, for a special permit. Under section six, one, ten, A for a second driveway, um, which the board is allowed to grant. With, uh, certain findings. The first of which is that the. The proposed part driveway has to meet all the requirements of the zoning bylaw. Uh, which includes that it has to lead to a legal parking space. Um. So in this case, uh, the legal space cannot be within the front yard setback. So the setback is twenty five feet. So the forty, the driveway being forty three feet in length would allow the space to be, um. Beyond the front yard setback. So that would be a legal location. Uh, drive, the minimum width for a parking space is eight and a half feet. And the proposed width here is ten feet. Um, and there is a. Um, a proposed, uh, buffer, um. Which, uh, was stated as being approximately eighteen inches in width, but is not dimensioned on the site plan. So I have, um. Just checking my notes. So the uh the required findings of for a second driveway. So there's three findings. The first is that the second driveway may be added in a manner that avoids an undue concentration of population. This would not change the necessarily the number of people living in the property, but would create space for um uh for guests and specifically care uh care provide, healthcare providers for uh the resident. Uh second driveway may be added in a manner that allows adequate provision of transportation. I think this is this and also there's a second transportation question under three, three, three. Which the board will need to consider um in regards to the 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 testimony about the um the traffic situation in this neighborhood. Um and the last is that you can some kind of extra some noise.
I think Mr. Cameron needs to mute himself.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Nope, no worries. Um and the last is that a second driveway may be added in a manner that conserves the value of land and buildings in the vicinity. The the driveway can be added. Um I don't think it would uh necessarily can impact the value of land or buildings in the vicinity. But the the transportation question, I would ask the members of the board um what their sort of sense is based on the what we have heard this evening. Does the board feel that it has enough information in regards to the transportation to move forward? Or if there's questions that uh would best be responded to by the town?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I think that the points that are raised by Mr. Moore, I mean, I don't really think of it as I take seriously what Ms. Corbett said about care, that this isn't just convenience for her. But it is safety for others and it's a, it is a complex intersection. Just seeing that extra street that comes in there and joins is is, I mean, there's a lot of room for confusion, especially people who don't go through that intersection e- every day. And I would like to to have a little time to have the board uh hear from John Alessi, the transportation planner. Uh it it isn't just an engineering issue, really. It's a transportation issue and a transportation safety issue. And I would like to have more assurances that this can be done without without significantly increasing the risk to the public before deciding, deciding.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Baronowski.
Are there, um I agree with what Mr. Hanlon said. I'd just add as if we go that route, this is a kind of another piece of information. Are there any other comparable intersections in the town that to this? And if so, you know, can can we find out more about in terms of traffic flow and also what the driveways look like? I'm just trying to get a sense of you know, what this, what this could possibly do.
Okay. Um in regards to the size of the driveway and the um the comment request from the abutting neighbor would just ask the applicant if um they would be willing to sort of change the dimensions slightly of the driveway to um reduce the width from ten feet to nine feet in order to accommodate a two-foot wide buffer on the side.
Yeah, I think I can answer uh from Mrs. Corbett on that. That shouldn't be a problem.
And then that two foot, that two foot buffer adjacent to the the other parcel should provide um space and the buffer is supposed to be um I think it just says landscaped. Um so I think we would request there that some kind of evergreen or something be provided um that would be appropriate for such locations and I thought.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
A thing like this where there's, there's a little bit of space between the proposed driveway and the lot line and then more space on the other side for the other driveway. It seems to me that this would be a great time for the principals to get together and chat over what would be the best in the best interest of both of them and kind of work out the buffer that that works well. I think there sound like reasonable people and nobody is on a high horse about anything. So it's it's just the sort of thing that a good discussion between the owners uh can produce something better than the board could produce.
The board's next scheduled meeting is August nineteenth, uh excuse me, August twelfth, Tuesday, August twelfth. So it sounds like the board has a couple of things that it would like to check up on and because Mr. Hamlet said it would be good if the abutting neighbors could discuss how best to address the uh the buffer between the two where it is just sort of open lawn at the moment. Would the applicant be amenable to a continuance to August twelfth?
Uh is Joanne still on?
She is.
Yeah, I I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. Joanne?
Yeah, I'm here. That's all right. The twelfth, does that work for you though, Dan?
Yes, it does.
Perfect. Okay, so um.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, Mr. Cameron.
Uh what what's interesting is that I I I totally uh respect the comments that were brought up um regarding the the intersection and so forth, but what what is interesting, if if you know, this is a legal building lot. Um so if uh if this were being constructed today, I think we will, I think the the better choice would be to come in and offer what you said, you know, based on, you know, Appleton Street. But that's, I know that's not a factor here, but um I I think that's the the the, it's kind of interesting to point out.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so um so any other information that members of the board would like to have? So we have the, we're gonna have the, the board was gonna talk to the transportation planner um about this location. Um I'm gonna go back and and uh talk to the engineer, the town engineer as well, just to make sure um that everything's copacetic there. And then we're gonna ask that the applicant and their neighbor sort of discuss how they may want to do the uh to landscape the buffer between the the two driveways um going forward. So is there anything else that the board would want? Seeing no, um so noted the next meeting of the board is currently scheduled for August twelfth. So I would move that the Board of Appeals for the Town of Arlington continue the public hearing for docket three, eight, five, one, which is three fifty-one Appleton Street. The, excuse me, three, eight, six, one, I believe it is, correct number. Um three fifty-one Appleton Street to Tuesday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty P M.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So roll call vote of the board to continue. Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Little blank?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
And then the chair votes yes. So we are continued on Appleton Street and um we will come back with answers on the twelfth of August. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so that concludes the public hearing portion of this evening. Um so we come back now to our administrative items. Uh these items relate to the operation of the board and as such will generally be conducted without input from the general public. The board will not take up any new business on prior hearings, nor will there be the introduction of any new information on matters previously brought before the board. Uh so the first vote um is a vote to reauthorize the chair to sign board decisions. Uh so this was something we had done back in July of last year. Um it has been a year since. Um and for the first time, I looked at what we voted on last time. Um and I've included the language again, which says, "The members of the zoning board of appeals of the Town of Arlington do hereby authorize the duly-elected chair of the board to sign decisions on behalf of all the members. This authority shall expire at the end of their term of office." So in theory, we should have probably done this back in April. Um but my term hasn't really ended because it just keeps rolling on. So um I'm going to propose that same language again. Um and basically this, what this vote does is it authorizes me to sign on your behalf. So we don't have to wait till five people show up at the office to sign a decision. So with that, I would move that the members of the zoning board of appeals for the Town of Arlington do hereby authorize the duly-elected chair of the board to sign decisions on behalf of all the members. This authority shall expire at the end of their term of office.
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Hanlon. Uh so roll call vote of the board, voting yes or no. Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Mr. Little Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. And that moves us on to the next item, uh which is uh voting to approve the minutes of our June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. These minutes were provided to the members of the board by uh Ms. Ralston for review and comment. Are there any additional questions or comments in regards to the meeting minutes for June twenty-fourth? Seeing none, I move to approve the minutes from the June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the board.
Second.
So roll call vote of the board, Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Little blank?
Yes.
Your Baronowski?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Those meetings are approved. Um and then the next item I had wanted to discuss. So as I, I will not be available on August twelfth. Um I will be literally on a plane during the meeting time. Um and I think TSA does not allow you to use the onboard wifi for that kind of a purpose. So uh with that in mind, I wanted to check with the board because we do um just making sure we have enough votes to vote on on matters and specifically uh Foster Street is a, is a good example that we would only have three members present. We need four in order to uh to vote on something. I wanted to ask the board if there was any interest in holding a separate meeting of the board just to vote on decisions. Um that we could schedule for any time, um would probably last, you know, twelve minutes. Um and would just allow us to approve those decisions in a public forum and then uh move on. And we could do it at a time when I'm not physically on an airplane. And then we would have um all members vote um on the decision. So I just wanted to ask if there was any, if there was any interest in doing that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Baronowski.
I I'll just cast my lot with, I'm interested because I I'll be on a flight, not as the meeting is happening, but I land about an hour and a half before. And so I'm sure I'll be able to make the meeting, but I'm only sure insofar as flights go, as flights are scheduled.
Okay. So we just approved a great number of decisions to be drafted. Is there a risk in trying to do it earlier? Or should we?
Well, I guess maybe it depends on how much earlier.
Alright, so uh so it sounds giving, giving Brad's flight schedule that just doing it is like an after, quick thing in the afternoon may not be the easiest. But we could do I mean, I can
Can we do it the day before?
We certainly could. Would that work for everyone? Doing it on the eleventh?
What time would we be thinking of doing it?
Brad, are you in a farly, a far disparate time zone or?
Oh, no, actually, on the eleventh is 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 perfect.
Okay, um want to do it at our usual seven thirty? Or do we want to do something? I mean, really, we could do it at any time at all.
Yep.
I could, I could make the seven thirty work.
Okay. Alright, let's go ahead and do that. I will be in the central time zone, so I just need to make sure that um I remember to do it at six thirty.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What would be the plan with respect to the case that that we didn't close the hearing on and that has to be continued?
So we continued that definitively to the twelfth?
Yep.
So that will stay on the twelfth?
So we would meet again on the twelfth, but with diminished.
And I believe that there are other hearings scheduled for a first reading on the twelfth.
Yeah, yeah, there are three new ones, I believe, for the twelfth, plus the one we just carried over.
So Pat, I can set you up with my usual cadre of drawings that I keep in the background here.
Yep. That sounds great.
I'm happy to help too, Pat.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So Colleen, if you don't mind, um posting that meeting, that would be great.
The good news is that we have no applicants for the twenty-sixth of August. Their deadline has passed for legal notices.
Ooh, okay. Big incentive to finish everything. Well, even if we finish everything on the twelfth, we're still gonna vote for decisions later on. Okay. Okay. Well, with that, um so we'll see everyone for as short a period of time on the eleventh as we can manage. And then um wish you all well on the twelfth. Is there anything else anybody wants to discuss this evening? Seeing none, I would like to thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting. I'd especially like to thank Colleen Ralston, Mike Champa, Tim Ross, uh and Mike Cunningham for their assistance in preparing for and hosting our online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's recording in the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of its proceedings. It is our understanding that recording made by ACMI will be available on demand at acmi.tv within the coming days. Please don't forget to support ACMI. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town.earthlington MA.us. That email address is also listed on the zoning board of appeals website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. So roll call vote to close, uh excuse me, to adjourn, uh Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Holly?
Yes.
Little blank?
Yes.
Mr. Baronowski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. And um when Mr. Hanlon reaches out to you and asks you to help draft a decision, please don't hesitate to say yes. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Have a good, good night.
Good night.